All right, we'll begin this morning with an invocation from Pastor Bob Long of St. Luke's Methodist Church.
Let us pray. Oh God, we thank you for the beginning of a new week and all the possibilities of life that open before us. We thank you for those who have given themselves to the high calling of serving others. We thank you for these young adults, our youth council, who also give themselves to grow in leadership and in learning. We pray that you would bless them as you bless our city council, as they now seek to make decisions that will help to create a community where all can have a high quality of life. And in a spirit of compassion and with a tongue of respect and with a commitment to cooperation, may they work together to create a city where everyone has the opportunity to pursue their dreams. May we choose to encourage rather than criticize. May we choose the goal of understanding rather than the force of confrontation. May we choose to build up rather than tear down. May we choose for the common good rather than our own selfish interest. We gather today, oh God, with the gift of freedom and the power of choice. So now give us the courage to exercise that power with compassion. Through our choices today, may we serve those who have placed their trust in us and may we choose good for the people of our great city. Amen.
Councilman James Greiner, would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good morning. I call this meeting of the city council to order. Welcome, everyone. We will begin with items from the office of the mayor. We have, we will have, I'm working on quite a few more appointments as I sort of settle into that part of my role, but we have a couple here today under 3A, the appointment of Ryan Cross and Blair Nafy to serve as members of the bond advisory committee. I would entertain a motion for approval of those appointments. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we have a fun annual ritual here at City Hall. We have the appointment under item 3B, the appointments of our youth council members. We are joined today by Sophia Jones, Julon White, I can't believe I'm going to do this to myself, I shouldn't, should have practiced these, Julon White, Jaden Calles, Madeline Dunn, Emily, what's that? Popolek, Daily Barnett, Jansen Griswold, Ashley Nguyen, Leslie Cisneros, Daniel Coronado, Shamaya, Shamia? Shamaya Naff, Kevin, I just feel like everybody ought to hear their name out loud, so even if it's poorly pronounced by the mayor, at least the mayor said it, right? Where were we? Kevin Palamino, Karina Cabrera, Brandon Lopez, Kristen Lindsay, Sibel, Sybil? Sybil Yilmaz, Evan Oldham, and Brooke Strickland. We are very honored and we are very excited for the year you are about to have. I think maybe we'll begin with, let's go ahead and appoint them, if we shall, approve their appointments, and then I think we've got a little bit of a presentation. Yeah, you can go ahead and make your way up here, but I'll entertain a motion in the meantime to approve these appointments. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any debate? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Our youth counselors are appointed, but now we would like to go around and get to know them a little bit better and probably hear their names pronounced correctly. So let us start over here with Councilman James Greiner.
All right, with the two youth counselors for Ward 1 are Madeline Dunn and Jaden Calles. I'll start with Madeline. Madeline is a senior at Yukon High School. She is active in student council and treasurer of the National Honor Society. Madeline has been a leader in the Yukon High School annual blood drive for two years. She is proud to volunteer once a month for the state to watch foster children while the foster parents attend their monthly meetings. Underage drinking and drug abuse is a serious issue with teens in Oklahoma City. The issue of peer pressure, pressure to succeed and not disappointing others are factors that promote drinking and drug abuse. Please join me in welcoming Madeline Dunn. Here's your pin. Jaden Calles is a senior at Putnam City High School. She is one of the top three students in her class as well as receiving Masonic Lodge Student of the Year Award. Jaden participates in student council, class officer secretary of National Honor Society. Jaden volunteers every year for the Metropolitan Friends of the Library Book Sale, local food pantries, and Arbor Grove Blue Jays program. She would like Oklahoma City to place more value on education and educational programs that support students in making better life choices such as substance abuse. Please join me in welcoming Jaden.
In Ward 2, we have Emily Popolek, and she's a junior at Harding Charter Preparatory High School. She participates in volleyball, track, and field. She's on the Payne Education Center Teen Board, and an issue that's particularly close to her heart is the lack of funding of education, and she wants to work on drawing attention to that situation and also utilizing the opinions of younger citizens in our community and influencing local government. I'll give you this, and do you have any family with you today? And her mother is here today. Is, where's her, hi. Okay, all right. And Daily Barnett is also a, is a junior at Mount St. Mary Catholic High School. She's on the Spanish Honor Society, National Honor Society, and student council. She also participates in volleyball and track. She's on the Cleats for Kids Teen Board and volunteers for the Safety Net Running Organization. She volunteers for her church in the neighborhood, working with very young children, and that's, that's the issue that's, I think, most close to her heart is the lack of emotional support in that age group. So Daily, I'll give you this, and do you have family here?
Thank you, yes. My mom, my dad, my brother.
Your mother, your father, and your brother are here. Where, where are they? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, that's it for Ward 2.
Ward 3 has two youth counselors. One of whom, Jansen Griswold, called me yesterday from Brazil, and he's not going to be here this, this morning. He's a senior at Southwest Covenant, is active in many leadership programs, has been selected to be involved with OKC Beautiful, and wants to work with students to have a better educational opportunity. So you'll get to meet him in person when he gets back from Brazil. And then Ashley Nguyen, she called me from New Jersey, my home state, where she's attending a leadership seminar. She's a senior at Western Heights High School. She's very active in programs to support sustainable things for low-income families, and she's very interested in improving the education in Oklahoma. So please welcome in absentia both Jansen and Ashley.
For Ward 4, I would like to introduce Leslie Cisneros. Leslie's a senior at Santa Fe South High School. She's a member of the National Honor Society, school newspaper, women's choir, volleyball, and works part-time at Old School Bagel Company. Leslie volunteers for the CAST program, tutoring elementary students after school, and 2M2L, a program to raise awareness to prevent underage drinking and substance abuse. Leslie feels strongly about children living in poverty. She works in the community with Church Under the Bridge, providing food, clothing, and church services to the homeless. Leslie has a love of community service and helping young people avoid violence and drug abuse through volunteer programs in Oklahoma City that support individuals through a sense of family. Congratulations, Leslie. Welcome. Next, we have Daniel Coronado. Daniel's a junior at Classon School of Advanced Studies. Daniel's been recognized as an outstanding musician in piano locally and nationally while maintaining a high grade point average. He's also very active in his Boy Scout troop, which has taught him the value of hard work and community service. Daniel volunteers as a member of the LCDA, the Latino Community Development Agency, for children from the first to the fifth grade. Daniel has a strong interest in teaching the youth in Oklahoma City the importance of education. Through educational encouragement, Daniel thinks it's possible for younger students to make better life decisions. Daniel has a deep connection to his local community and often helps elder neighbors with chores and friendship. Daniel also loves to share his talent in music to encourage others. Congratulations, Daniel.
I am joined this morning by the at-large youth counselors. First, Sophia Jones, behind me, senior at Harding Fine Arts Academy. She's joined today. I met her parents, Ruth and Sheldon Jones. She is a member of National Honor Society Student Council and Yoga Club. She enjoys playing with children during her more than 30 volunteer hours so far at Infant Crisis Services. She helps design events and raise money. I like this, is the current president of the Friends of Martin Nature Park Teen Board. We appreciate that, that is, of course, a city facility. She is also on the martial arts varsity team. Between the yoga and the martial arts, I think you have a lot to teach your fellow counselors. She also is very interested in poverty issues, and that's something that she would like to explore while on the youth council. Right here, I'm joined also by Julon White. He is a senior at Putnam City West, the Patriots. His father, Julon, is here as well. He ranks in the top 1% of his class. He has received honors for academic excellence in many subjects. He's involved in the student government, student council, National Honor Society, school broadcasting, the academic teams, Spirit Club, and many more. He is the chief anchor of Westworld, which is PC West's news and television show, so we've got a, we've got a TV anchor back in the mayor's office. He is also volunteers, is an after-school tutor, and he has been involved in Special Olympics, and he's very interested in the education funding issue here in Oklahoma City, and education in general will be a priority for him. I'm going to present them, as everyone else is, with some very nice city council pins, and would you please welcome and congratulate Sophia and Julon.
Ward 5 has two outstanding students representing this area with respect to the youth council. The first is Shamaya Naff, who is a senior at Westmore High School. She's involved with the speech and debate clubs, key clubs, Link Crew, and National Honor Society. Shamaya is the president of Westmore's African-American Club and was named a top student in AP Statistics. She believes that teen pregnancy is an issue among her peers and would like to see better access to sex education for students. The second representative from Ward 5 is Kevin Palamino. Kevin is a senior at Southeast High School. He's involved in Hope Corps and in, an internship program at the Regional Food Bank, League of Latin American Citizens and Student Council. He mentors with the Police Athletic League, helping children with homework and other projects. Kevin would like to see better training and communication for his peers. He believes teens are working towards career goals but often don't have the skills needed to connect with the community and business leaders. Please help me welcome Shamaya and Kevin.
It's my pleasure this morning to introduce to you Karina Cabrera. Karina's parents are Maria Garcia and Dimitrio Cabrera. She is a senior at Dove Science Academy. Karina's involved in the League of United Latin American Students and has served as its president and its vice president. She's also a member of Latinos Without Borders, Women of the South, and the National Honor Society. Katrina has volunteered in the Capitol Hill area with Haunt the Hills, Yesterday Las Americas, and she's organized college panels to speak to her peers. She maintains a near-perfect GPA while also being successful in numerous concurrent classes. Katrina would like to see better communication and deeper relationships between the different communities within Oklahoma City and is hoping that her time on the youth council will help her make that start. Katrina, let me go ahead and give you your pin and welcome you to Ward 6. Congratulations. Delighted to have you. Our second Ward 6 youth counselor is Brandon Lopez. Brandon is a senior at Aztec Charter High School today, and I know that his mom and his sister are here with him today. Brandon is a member of the student council, League of United Latin American Citizens, and Health Corps. For the past two years, he's represented his peers as a class officer, and as president, he leads other members of his class who plan and run all the school events, volunteer in the community for numerous organizations, have fundraised thousands of dollars for multiple nonprofit organizations, and spreads school spirit. His honors include headmaster and superintendent honor roll and the national technical honor roll. Brandon feels he's a good communicator and easily approachable, and I can confirm both of those two things already, having met him for the first time this morning. He would like to see improvement to lower-income areas and hopes to help with this as he learns more about what he can do as a youth counselor. Brandon, welcome to Ward 6.
Thank you. Glad to have you here.
Good morning. We've got the youth council, two outstanding students. One is Christian Lindsay. Christian is a senior at Crooked Oaks High School. She is flight commander for Junior ROTC program, an elementary school reading buddy. She's a member of the Honor Society Social Choir at Metro Tech Business and Professionals of America's Club. Christian has volunteered for Feed the Children Regional Food Bank. Her teacher, Brenda Anderson, says Christian is smart, dedicated to her studies, and compassionate towards her classmates. She's a real role model. She also received awards for academic excellence as well as National Honor Society of the Daughters of American Revolution Medal, and also outstanding flight ribbon. She believes that bullying is an issue that needs to be addressed among her peers. She would like to see more support available for peer collaboration and education to end bullying. Let us receive Christian. She's not here today, but let us receive Christian Lindsay. Also with Ward 7 is Sybil Yilmaz. Sybil is a senior at Mercy School Institute. She is one of the founding members and officers of Junior Branch Soraya Anna, which is an organization that assists women and children in need. She's a member of Mercy Youth Leadership Committee in Muslims of, Muslims of Oklahoma and Islamic Relief USA. Sybil has been a special care volunteer for four years, working with pre-kindergarten classrooms. She has been given various awards throughout her school career, which includes scholarships, Merit Scholar Award, the principal's honor roll, the Koran Award, the Arabic Award, the Bookworm Award, and the Creativity Award. Sybil believes that youth of today don't truly understand the importance of secondary education, and she would like to see more funding for programs that encourage higher education. Even though Sybil is not here, let us put our hands together and receive them.
Good morning. It's my honor and pleasure to introduce two outstanding students from Ward 8, Evan Oldham and Brooke Strickland. Both of them are not here today. Evan is on a mission trip to Israel, and Brooke is on a family vacation. Let me tell you a little bit about Evan, a really outstanding student. Evan Oldham is a senior at Edmund Santa Fe High School. He serves as the decorations director and public relations manager for the student council. He is a member of Key Club, Environmental Club, and National Honor Society at his school. He also serves on the Pivot Teen Board and volunteers with a variety of local nonprofits each month. As student council sponsor, Mrs. Robbins says, "Evans is my go-to student for anything. He constantly pushes himself to improve as a human, a student, and a leader." Evan believes that teen drug and alcohol use is something that needs to be addressed. He thinks educating parents on the dangers and access to drugs and alcohol is very important. Let's give Evan a big hand. Secondly, I'd like to introduce Brooke Strickland. She's from Deer Creek High School. She is a senior this year. She is a member of student council, National Honor Society, and the soccer team. Brooke also serves on the Oklahoma Hall of Fame Teen Board, which entails attending monthly meetings, being an escort for the Oklahoma Hall of Fame induction, and setting up an annual fundraiser for the museum. She is heavily involved in her church, serving as a greeter on Sunday mornings and leading Bible study during the week. She wants her peers to learn about the importance of graduating from high school. She believes having conversations about the importance of education is a good start. Let's give Brooke a big hand.
Let's hear it for all of our youth counselors.
Mayor, I would like to take the liberty of introducing our program co-chairs this year, one of whom is present, Debbie Forshee, and then Major Dexter Nelson, who was in some police activities this morning and could not be here. So we thank them for their support.
Let's thank them, yes. And of course, none of this would be possible without Debbie Martin. Let's thank her for all of her work she puts in. Anything else by, any, any members of our council to say about youth council program? Okay, yeah, awesome. Well, let's, let us move on then. That concludes the office of the mayor, and I should say, everybody is welcome to leave, but then again, maybe you want to watch, you're kind of into this thing, so, so you're welcome to stay as well. But we will now move on to item 4, Journal of Council Proceedings. There's item A and B here, receiving the journal from July 17th and approving the journal from July 3rd. I would entertain a motion.
Move the items.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item 5, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, starting on page 23, under item 9G1, item G 2645 Southwest 40th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item I, 4009 Southeast 45th Street, we ask that they be stricken. The owner secured. Moving on to item 9H1, same to properties. Item H, 2645 Southwest 40th Street, we ask that it be stricken. The owner has secured. And also item I, 4009 Southeast 45th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
That was a short list today. So for our youth counselors, I'll tell you that what he just did there was things that we're, we're going to move, we're not going to have on the agenda this, this week. We should have given you all agendas. We should, you should be able to follow along. Is there anybody? Yeah, go grab some of them agendas, so they could, so they could follow along with what we're doing. All right. Item 6, Revocable Permits. We've got a revocable right-of-way use permit with revolve productions to hold AMP Festival, and it looks like this, of course, this will be on Sheridan between Char Tell and Lee, and it looks like we have Toby Coleman here. Toby, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Good morning, councilmembers. Mayor. We are very excited that this is our third year for AMP Festival. It's an all-female music and art festival. All the musicians are either female-fronted bands or all-female bands of all genres, and we have over 70 artists and artisan tents. In the past, we've had this on 9th Street between Broadway and Oklahoma Avenue. This year, we've relocated it to Film Row between, it's on Sheridan Avenue between Char Tell and North Lee and the parking lot of the Paramount Building, still in Ward 6. And we will be closing that street at midnight on the 25th and reopening it again on the 25th about 11:00 PM, and that's what our request is for the revocable.
Great. Councilwoman.
Toby, thanks for coming down. This is really a great event. I can't believe it's already the third year. It's amazing.
I know. It's exciting.
And I think it outgrew 9th space, 9th Street fairly quickly.
Yes, it did.
Welcome to Film Row, and I'm delighted to see the proceeds of this event, as I think they have in the past, going to the girls' art school.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. I would move approval of the event.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously.
Thanks, council.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, we will now recess the council meeting. We will convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. This is a body that has the same membership of the council, but a little different authority, and we have several items, looks like A through E, and we could take those as one motion. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us, we will now adjourn the OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have three items here, and we can handle them with one motion as well.
Move those items.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will now adjourn the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Turn over to page 4, if you're following in a paper agenda, and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. We have only one item here, claims and payroll. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will now adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the city council, where we find ourselves on item 7, the consent docket.
Move those items subject to individual consideration.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Are there any items that anybody would like to pull out for discussion or otherwise? Well, we'll start with James.
V, as in Victor.
Okay.
Bravo Alpha, BA.
Okay.
BH for Meg.
I-2 and W.
Wait, where was it again?
I-2 and W.
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 Mayor, we do have a presentation on the item that Mr. McAtee had pulled.
Okay, and did you have anything, Mark?
One item, Your Honor, item 7B.
B, okay. James wanted that as well, so. Okay. You said V, right?
V is Victor.
Yes, got it. Okay. We'll just take them in order, and that means we will start there with item V. Councilman Greiner first.
Okay, yeah, this is a allocation of Better Streets, Safer City funds to redo or repair the Burt Cooper Trail around Lake Hefner. The western part of it's in Ward 1, the eastern part of it's in Ward 8. I think this is, I've been on it, and it does, it does need it because it's, it's one of the oldest and most-used trails in the city. I did have a question, though, for Eric. Towards the end of some of the MAPS 3 trails that we did, we started putting concrete edges on all of the trails, and it seemed that the goal of that was to keep the asphalt more stable and to keep grass from growing up on top of the asphalt. Is that, is that going to be done in this, or is it going to basically remain the same, just getting a new top on it?
So for the Burt Cooper Trail, it's going to predominantly remain the same. We're not adding the concrete mow strips, or sometimes referred to as the header curb. I do think that we'll continue to look at those on new trail systems, that as we renovate existing trails, they'll, in some cases, be improved through, of course, crack sealing and resurfacing. In some cases, maybe a small widening if we find a narrow trail, but no, it doesn't include, it doesn't include, like, a complete reconstruction.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
That was Eric Winger, our Public Works Director. Mark, you wanted to talk about this item as well?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. And just so the youth council understands, this is a trail that's out at Lake Hefner, and it's one of the most popular trails in Oklahoma City, as James said. It's being, it's being funded. It's going to take $770,000 to fix these trails. It's being funded through our Better Streets, Safer City sales tax, which was an initiative for 27 months, one cent, that raised $240 million for trails and streets and other things. And the one thing I would like to say about this, and I'm really excited about it, because I get a lot of calls about it, is that the work will begin by the end of summer, so it's got a quick timeframe.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. All right, well, we'll move on now to item W. Councilman Cooper. Councilman Cooper. You're up.
Just wanted to look at item W and recognize the significance of...
Recognize the significance of the Slaughter House and its historical significance as the first African-American doctor in our community and our city. And just wanted to highlight that, so that it would not be missed.
So of what relation was Dr. Slaughter to the famous venue in Deep Deuce, Slaughter's Hall? Is that?
Yes.
Was that his?
Yes. He owned several businesses as well, and very active in the community, and so that is also.
Cool. All right. Now we've got, moving on to the item for which we actually have a presentation, and that is item BA, Resolution Improving Requests for Proposals for the Fourth MAPS-III Senior Health and Wellness Centers. So we want to start with Mike.
Mike Meis is here with ADG to talk to us about the Fourth Wellness Center.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Manager. Always a pleasure to be here. The purpose of the presentation is to describe for you briefly, in summary terms, the request for proposal that we, has been recommended by both the Citizens Subcommittee for the Senior Health and Wellness Centers and by the Citizens Advisory Board. Some of you have seen a similar presentation before. This is, this RFP is actually taken from the RFP for Wellness Center Number Three with a couple of changes, which I will point out. The city seeking qualified organizations to create a Fourth Wellness Center. Those proposals will be received on October 30th. The city, as has been the case in the past, will hire the architect and the contractor. The operator will be responsible to maintain and operate this facility and will be responsible for all costs and expenses related to the facility, except for some standard capital improvement items, which will be identified by a dollar amount in the contract. They will be entitled to all of the revenues from the operation, but they, during the design phase, will also be, make themselves available to assist in the planning and programming of the facility. Summary of the terms, it's, we anticipate a multi-year contract, as we've had in the past, with the possibility for additional terms at the city's discretion. During the construction phase, the operator will participate in construction meetings, and during that time period, will also be expected to try to contract with all subcontractors and teaming members and partners, which will assist them in the operation of the center. During that time period, they will also be expected to hire and train their employees. I said there are a couple of differences. One is the location. The Subcommittee asked us and the MAPS staff to look at demographics within the city limits with respect to both age and health outcomes. We had a significant amount of input from the Oklahoma City County Health Department, which helped determine the two areas which you see described above. These areas are described as preferences. They are not mandatory. The language is very similar to what was in the RFP for Wellness Center Number Three. Once again, they're not mandatory, but the areas are generally bounded on the southwest side, from southwest 104th to 164th, and from Santa Fe to Portland. They are also generally, the second area, and only one of these two areas would be selected. Actually, one area will be selected, and it may or may not be one of these areas, but these are the preferences. The second preferred area is from northwest 23rd to northwest 63rd and from Pennsylvania to Portland. In terms of qualifications, this, we would prefer, obviously, that the operator have relevant experience with senior health and wellness centers, that the programs and activities that they plan for that center relate to the cultural and economic diversity of the area that the center is located in, that the operator have the fiscal and service capacity to operate the center, that they have demonstrated wellness center and service delivery experience, and because the city will have some oversight in this operation, they need to be able to work with and cooperate with the city. One of the things that we've learned in the past is that there are not a lot of operators out there who have direct, relevant experience. So there is a provision within the RFP that says, in the absence of direct experience, respondents should describe the capabilities which qualify them for consideration. In terms of operator qualifications, again, they have to provide a statement of qualifications, including the names of key professionals and personnel who will be involved in the organization, the organization's history and background. We expect and have received in the past very detailed business plans, which go a long way toward helping the interview team determine which of the potential operators is most qualified. They have also been asked to provide a specific proposed fee schedule for all of the programs, including a sliding fee scale, which would accommodate persons of all income levels. They need to explain their quality assessment process. They need to be able to describe their public and employee health procedures, and they also need to have a detailed emergency action plan. The contract will have a lot of the standard city language that's included in the centers for the first three wellness centers as well, including indemnification, insurance, nondiscrimination, and notice of equal employment opportunity. The evaluation criteria are the same as they have been in the past. This is a guideline for the selection team to help them objectively evaluate the proposals. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions for Mike? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Councilman McAtee, I know you wanted to talk about this item.
Yes, I would like to, council, to consider making... An amendment to the RFP that you see before you. In order to provide a level of importance in the people who might respond to be operators, that there's another area of our city that might benefit from a senior wellness center. That area would be Reno on the north, South May Avenue on the east, Southwest 15th on the, 59th on the south, and Cemetery Road on the west. This is an area that may not have exactly the demographics that the committee looked at up to this point, but it's got tremendous growth going on out there. There's tremendous emphasis on seniors with senior communities going on up there, and there's the turnpike going in that'll change the transportation dynamics of that area. So I would like to recommend that the RFP go from two areas to three, and that the boundaries generally be Reno on the north, South May on the east, Southwest 59th on the south, and South Cemetery on the west. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. So procedurally, what we'll do is, we'll actually pull the, we'll pull item BA out for a separate vote, and then we'll have it a vote on the amendment, should you make a motion and should it succeed. So since we already have motions on the table, I should have thought of this a moment ago, but we'll go ahead and handle the other items, and then we'll return to that discussion real quick. Is that okay? Okay. Is there anything else? We'll come back to BA. Why don't we move on to BH?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Item BH is a resolution that accepts a $19,100 donation from the Kirkpatrick Family Fund, which is an affiliated fund of the Oklahoma City Community Foundation. And the purpose is to provide for executive development of the Oklahoma City Police Department employees. And I just was surprised at the, I did not know this, but for every year since 1995, that's a long time, the Kirkpatrick Family Fund has provided over $300,000 to send 44 individuals to this intensive leadership training program, and it's designed specifically for police leadership. And over the course of that time period, more than a third of those attending the training have been promoted to executive leadership positions in the Police Department, the City Manager's Office, and other agencies. It's a huge contribution to our staff development, and I think really nice to recognize their long-term commitment to that program, something I just was unaware of.
Great. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Well, that's all the items that we had that had been mentioned. Is there anything else anyone wants to bring up about the Consent Docket? If not, seeing no discussion, we'll cast our votes on everything except for item BA. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll return to item BA. We're on the topic here of adding a third area for potential consideration in the RFP as a site for the MAPS-III, for the Fourth MAPS-III Senior Wellness Center. Mr. City Manager?
Just want to point out that those are preferences. It's an RFP, so people can propose outside of those areas, but those were the preferences identified. Mr. McAtee's asking the third area preference.
Councilman Stonecifer.
Thank you, Your Honor. And first of all, I want to say I have great respect for the committees and ADG and the work they've done, but I kind of tend to agree with Larry that we ought to look at this area, because I grew up in this area, and I know the density and the makeup. And one thought, Larry, I might have, and I don't know if you'd entertain this, is to continue it south from 59th to, like I say, 104th.
The reason it stops at 59th is, if you know the geography out there, as I'd like you to do, from 59th to 89th, and from county line to, I think it's Frisco, is the geographic boundaries of Mustang. And so that's why it was set up that way, thinking that the site would be north of Mustang if it was selected out there, and would encompass, of course, the entire area all the way to the river, way to the south.
I'll defer to you. You know the geography better than I do. Thank you.
I would second Larry's motion.
He hasn't actually made it yet, but we'll consider that you've made a motion.
I just made it.[1323.13][1323.13](LAUGHING).
He's made a motion now to amend the RFP, as he's described already, and I'm sure Francis will get all that down, and then Meg has now seconded it. Is there any other discussion? Okay, we'll see none. We'll vote on the motion to amend the RFP. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, so then, would we like to go ahead and approve the resolution on the RFP? Motion and a second to approve the resolution as amended. Seeing any discussion? Seeing none, we will cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. That concludes the Consent Docket. We will now move on to item eight on page 16 of the paper agenda, the Concurrent Docket. This is where the council concurs or doesn't with items approved previously by some of our trusts. These can be handled in one motion.
Move those items subject to individual consideration.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we move on to item nine, Items Requiring Separate Votes. This is on page 20 of the paper agenda. We have several planning cases under item A. We'll begin with A1. So these are all ordinances on final hearing. A1 is requesting an ABC2 overlay on the I-1 Light Industrial area at 4400 Highland Boulevard. Councilman McAtee.
Yes, the applicant present.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Megan Wilson. Did you want the one from the my address or the property?
Uh, I guess we've got your address, right, Francis? Her? Yeah, your address.
It's going to be 1314 North Midwest Boulevard.
Okay.
Apartment 8, Northwest City, Oklahoma, 73110.
Thank you. Would you like to talk about the...
If you would, just briefly brief the council on what your intentions are for this.
Basically, we switch from a Holiday Inn Express to a Clarion, and their amenities program basically require us to offer our guests either wine or beer. So we're more just wanting to...
This is turned by the Planning Commission unanimously approved, unless the council has some questions. Has anybody signed up? I move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none. Any discussion on the council? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we've got item 9A2. This is requesting an ABC2 overlay on the C3 area at 3,000 West Memorial Road, Suite 109. Councilman Stonecifer.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It's an ABC2 license, as you said. It went before the Planning Commission on June 14th and received approval. I'm aware of no protest, so I'd move the item.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. Any discussion on the council? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we've got item 9A3. This is at 12 Northeast 102nd Street, moving it from AA Agricultural to SPUD 1060. Councilman Cooper.
Good morning. Tim Johnson, Wendy's, California. I'm sorry, Wendy's, Sheridan, Oklahoma City, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a rezoning of a piece of property that is kind of a continuation of the medical development that's going on south, north of Britton Road between Oklahoma and Broadway. The property that's vacant here is owned, office as well, and it's heavily zoned on the west side, so working with the planning staff, we feel like this, about Oklahoma is the dividing line on how far development would go in, and so this was approved by Planning Commission unanimously. It's for O2, with some limited restrictions.
Are you in agreeance with the technical T's?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone to speak on this? I would move for adoption.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Approval.
And there's a second. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. All right, we've got item 9A4. This is at 8,000 West Wilshire, zoning it from R1 to SPUD 1061. Councilman Griner?
Yeah, this is to allow a convenience store on the corner of Wilshire and Council. Had unanimous Planning Commission approval. There was one protester. Has anybody signed up?
Has anyone signed up? I would assume no. Okay. No.
With that, I move for approval.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Anyone here to talk on this item? Seeing none. Any discussion on the council? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that moves us to 9A5. This is at 2149 Southwest 59th Street, moving it from O2 to SPUD 1062. Councilwoman Salier.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the applicant is here.
Good morning. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an SPD that would take the site from O2 to a spud that would allow multifamily residential, senior independent living. This is an area that is a close proximity to the large medical complex down on the south side. It's consistent with the surrounding zoning. There were no protests. Staff did recommend approval. Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to the T's, and we do agree with the technical evaluations.
Francis, has anyone signed up to speak on this? Well, as David said, the staff recommends this plan. It is in an area that's becoming more heavily focused on medical uses. The vote at the Planning Commission was unanimous with no protest, so I'd move approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there anyone here to speak? Seeing none. Any discussion on the council? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We've got not, item 9A6. This is at 8100 North I-35 Service Road, moving it from I-1 to SPUD 1063. Councilman Cooper?
Yes, applicant present.
David?
Once again, for the record, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application up on I-35, and this is one that we spent considerable time working with staff. It's currently zoned in I-1, and what we have done is, we've encumbered the property here with a SPUD to keep the I-1 base, but add the necessary use units for the chemical storage and mixing. This is a distribution center. However, the possibility of mixing some chemicals does exist, so the use unit we had to add was hazardous chemicals. So knowing that when people saw that word, it might cause some concern, we went and met with staff, and what we have done is, within the SPUD, we have removed the mixing of certain chemicals that cause a particular concern. There is a representative from the end user here, if the council would like to hear from him. There was significant... There was significant discussion at the Planning Commission about the process, about what they are storing and what they are mixing. After that, it was recommended unanimously by the Planning Commission. It also is recommended for approval by the staff. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I ask for your approval.
I know that this was an application that was approved by the Planning Commission. There were some protesters there, but I think all of their questions were satisfied in the end, and it was approved by the Planning Commission. I move for adoption.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there anyone here to discuss this item? Seeing none, any further discussion on the council? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, 9A7. This is at 4401 West Memorial Road, moving it from R1 to SPUD 1065. Councilman Stone, cipher.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone 4401 West Memorial Road into a parking lot. It was approved by the Planning Commission. There were no protests. I'm not aware of any protest, so I would move for approval at this time.
We've got a motion and a second. Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, any further discussion on the council? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9A8. This is at 7101 Miramar Boulevard, moving it from R1 to SPUD 1066. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, is the applicant present?
Brad? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
My name is Brad Rice. Address is 1109 River Chase.
Can you tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure. So to some of you all, you may know 7101 North Miramar is the old haunted house restaurant that's been vacant. It's been around for 50-plus years with non-conforming youths. The intent is I have a purchase agreement and plan to, with your approval today, have that rezoned and reused, repurposed for Group Home for Boys. So to some of the youth that were here, there was some passion for foster kids and so forth. Mike McPherson's here as Spec Home for Boys, Executive Director. Has a couple of homes already in operation, Dr. Cooper's Ward down by 14th and Lincoln, so this will be an extension to his program with a contract that he has with DHS. And we've already entered into a lease, so if we have this approved, we'll move forward with the purchase contract.
Mr. McPherson, can you tell us a little bit about the boys that you actually care for in Spec Homes and what you guys do? And counsel, I'm going to be asking for an emergency on this.
Yes, as I said, I might be first in Sec for Spec Home for Boys. This program is used for boys who have been traumatized. They're in DHS custody. They come from abused homes and neglectful settings. We're going to be providing a full-scale services focused strictly on trauma therapy along with education, and also getting them back, some back in their home and moving ready into foster care or lower level of replacement. This be what we're looking at, is a possibility of 16 adolescents there in that location. What it provides for us to be able to be in the city area, have access to all the school, jobs, and those things that young men are needing. We provide services in terms of full array of counseling from individual group to therapy, family therapy, also specialize in really helping the boys to regulate themselves through their abuse experiences. And doing that, we have a staff ratio of one to four, and so there'll be a total of at any given time, six people onboard at each hour of the day that the young men are there.
As you may know, this is taking the place of the old haunted house restaurant. This organization has run just to really squeaky clean, have a squeaky clean record, and DHS needs the beds. And so today, because of a staffing error, we did not double notice this, and so I'm asking for an emergency on this because we failed on our part to really double notice this. So are there any other concerns? I move for adoption.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. The emergency will be a separate motion and vote, so this is just on approval. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, any further discussion on the council? We'll vote on the motion to approve, passes unanimously, and then I'll entertain a motion...
I move for approval for the emergency.
We've got a motion and a second on the emergency. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, we'll cast our votes, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we are at 9B. This is ordinance on final hearing. This was recommended for approval. This is a special permit to permit a telecommunication tower in the R1 Single Family Residential District found at 2101 Northwest 16th. Councilwoman Salier.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. I think I ought to probably set the stage just a little bit here. This is a very complicated situation, and Kenny, I'm going to be relying heavily on legal advice as we move through this. In the 10 years that I've served on the council, this is only the second one of these special permits that have been protested at this level to come before us. And I think what we will do today is essentially have a recorded hearing. Kenny, what do we call this procedure?
Just a hearing. We have a court reporter here, so if everybody states their name when they make comments, she'll be able to take it down in the record.
Great, so I just wanted to be sure that everybody here knew that we do have a court reporter. We'll be recording all of this so that should the result not be what is wished, either party has the opportunity to move this forward to district court, and this will be the record provided for that. So I guess, David, maybe you would present the case to begin with, and then we'll listen to the neighbors that are here, and we'll take it from there.
Sure. So for the record, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I am here today on behalf of the applicant, Eco Site, and what we're here on is a special permit application. I've got several people here with me to prevent or to present various types of testimony for the council. With us is Romel E. Logan. He is an RF engineer with T-Mobile. The testimony you will hear from him is that currently in this area, we have a significant gap in the capacity of T-Mobile service. Next, you'll hear from James Cardinal. He is a site acquisition specialist. What you will hear from him is the process he went through to acquire the site and analyze various alternative sites, and ultimately what you will see is the site we have selected is the least intrusive means. And finally, Bob Grace, who is an MAI-designated appraiser. He is here to testify regarding property values and the lack of an impact that these towers have on surrounding property values. Mr. Grace has testified before this council in years past. He's done various proximity studies in which he has studied the impacts based upon market data. And again, he'll get into that in a little bit. Before I begin, I do want to briefly go through the documents that you have before you, make sure everybody's got it. So what you have is a tabbed exhibit binder, working from front to back. Exhibit A is a legal memorandum that my office prepared regarding the various federal aspects of these cases. B is a document produced by T-Mobile that is the RF data that will show why we have a gap and why this site is necessary. C are photo simulations showing what this tower will look like at various vantage points throughout the neighborhood. D is a site plan and kind of construction-like drawings that show you the details of the site in terms of height and the build-out area. E is the search ring. That is what James will be talking about. Because this is an urbanized area, the location to fill this gap is very small, and that's why the ring is as small as you see. And finally, F is a letter from Romel, and it's the RF justification letter. So I do think it's perhaps beneficial to kind of walk backwards in this case. This is an old case in terms of zoning cases. This was filed in December of 2017. When we filed it, it was a 90-foot steel monopole. Almost immediately, we received protests, so we went, sat down with neighbors, had several meetings, and one of the first things that my client agreed to do was to modify the application from a steel monopole to a stealth tower. And so if you'll turn to Exhibit C in your booklet, Exhibit C is Bates number, you'll see numbers at the bottom, and perhaps the best image, we can walk through all of these, but perhaps the best image to see what it will look like is Exhibit C, Bates number 008. What you'll see there is an image of the church, and then you see the tower. So what you see in the background as the cross on that three-sided structure, that is now the cell tower. This is what in the industry they call a stealth tower. I would submit to you that in several years, once this is built, if somebody was not involved in this dispute and didn't know that it was a cell tower, they wouldn't think twice about seeing a cross on what appears to be a bell tower or clock tower on a church site. So that was the first thing we did, and it doesn't come easily. These things do cost significant money compared to what we could do with a traditional steel monopole. Ms. Langken, if you could go to the aerial, do you have an aerial? Yeah, that works. So right now, you see one through seven all focused on the little dot. Before that little dot was where we're talking about, we were further to the west. We were closer to the house to the west, and that was a big concern. We went to Planning Commission in March with our application on that site to the west. Planning Commission was unanimous in the recommendation for approval. As we moved forward to city council, prior to city council, it was requested that we go back, see if there's a chance we can move this further to the east. It's a bit tricky in that my client doesn't own the dirt. They are a tenant. Up until this point, the landowner had been unwilling to allow us to move any further east for fear that it may impact their operations on site, but we pleaded with them that this was something I think would be better for the neighborhood and the community, and ultimately they relented. And so we moved the site 50 feet to the east. Again, that didn't come at no cost. There were significant costs in reengineering, resuminal, attorney fees, having to go back to Planning Commission. So we went back to Planning Commission in June, now with our new site, and once again, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this site, and now we find ourselves here before the city council. So it is, it's a strange area of municipal law in that the Federal Telecommunication Acts of 1996 has really reserved and stripped away a lot of the ability of local governments' municipalities' ability to deny these. When you look at the Federal Act, the Supreme Court has described the purpose as "to encourage the rapid deployment of new technology communications." The Act is sought to reduce impediments imposed by local governments. What you can see happening is when telecommunication technology became prevalent, local governments were routinely denying these applications based upon protests from neighbors. So through various litigations, what has come out is a two-pronged approach when you look at these cases. What typically happens if a city were to deny a case like this, the carrier would make what's called an effective prohibition challenge. Under the effective prohibition challenge, it's a two-pronged approach. The first prong requires the provider to show a significant gap in its own service coverage or capacity. So what the FCC has made clear is that a state or local government may not lawfully deny an application to cite a personal wireless service facility on the basis that other wireless carriers serve the same geographic area. So what that means is, when you think about what we're doing here, I can tell you that this is T-Mobile, Eco Site's means of last resort. What they do first is they try to upgrade all their existing towers to see if they can serve and fill that gap based upon current available technology that they've got in the area. We did that here. After we upgraded the technology, we still had the gap. Next, they try to see if they can co-locate. The city ordinances require co-location. There were no co-location opportunities in this area that would fill this gap. It's only after those two routes fail that a carrier is willing to go to the extraordinary cost to go build a new tower. So that's why we find ourselves here. So again, what you'll hear from Romel is that we have a gap, a significant gap in the capacity. He's got a lot of technical data that he's going to be willing to provide. He's happy to answer any questions. If you're like me, what he's telling you is going to be much higher than my ability. You guys are fortunate in that you have a colleague in Councilman Stone that in a previous life was an RF engineer. I would submit that perhaps there's only two people in this entire room that are going to understand what is being said when it comes to RF data, Councilman Stone and Romel. If anyone else up here does understand it, I apologize. I'm not trying to diminish your ability to understand RF data. Once we prove that the significant gap does exist, then we have to show that the site we have selected is the least intrusive means. Various federal courts have weighed in on this, and what it really comes down to, and I'm quoting from the Unified Government of Wyandotte County case, "It allows for a meaningful comparison of alternate sites before the citing application process is needlessly repeated. The standard only requires a showing that a good faith effort has been made to identify and evaluate less intrusive alternatives." So with that in mind, if we go back and look at Exhibit E, which again is the search ring, what you'll see is that within that ring, the only site that is not fully developed as an R1 single-family property is this church. That's not uncommon in urbanized areas that churches are really, churches and schools are the only available sites to fit one of these towers. Now, James, what he did, he looked at alternate sites just to be able to present those to the RF engineer. What you'll hear is all the other alternatives were rejected for RF reasons or site constraint reasons, and so ultimately, the primary candidate became the only candidate. So the other thing that, and I don't know how many people were able to read the memo that I submitted, but what you see, especially in the 10th Circuit, which is where we fall, all of the concerns raised by neighbors in these cases have been litigated over and over and over again. And consistently, what you see, especially in that the Wyandotte County case, is the federal court rejecting those arguments. That's why you have a court reporter here today. Essentially, what the federal law requires is that if a city is going to deny one of these, the city must be in a position to, one, base it on substantial evidence in writing. So the in-writing box is checked with your court report being here, but it requires that you base it on substantial evidence. And what that has been found to mean is that it must be based upon your zoning code. I don't see anything in the zoning code by which the city would be able to deny this. Further, most of the things that you'll hear and that you've read in the protest are things that have been specifically litigated and rejected by the federal courts, starting with general concerns about aesthetics and property values. And I'm quoting again from the Wyandotte County case, "General aesthetic concerns are insufficient to constitute substantial evidence needed to justify the denial of an application. More, mere assertions that proposed cell tower will negatively impact property values do not constitute substantial evidence." Next, what you would see oftentimes is anecdotal evidence of neighbors coming up with cellphones showing that they have service. So the case, and I quote, "Anecdotal evidence of service quality in the area to be served by the proposed facility is not substantial evidence to justify denial." Health effects is another common concern, based upon, I guess, the RF data or RF emissions. The case says, "Government cannot deny an application on the basis of alleged health effects." Now, we're seeing a lot of change in technology. I think the council, or I think there's a case working its way through the Design Review Committee for a small cell technology. That was an area that we discussed a lot with the neighbors. They wanted us to look at small cell technology. Romel can answer those questions. What I'll tell you is, small cell technology doesn't work unless it's in really urbanized areas like a downtown. It wouldn't work in this area, but it is important to note that there are certain elements of the telecommunication area that the federal government has just flat-out preempted. One of those is technical and operational matters. In reading from the town, let's see, it's the New York SMSALP versus Town of Clarkson, this court held that the town's preference for alternate technologies to close service coverage gaps are also preempted because they interfere with the federal government's regulation of technical and operational aspects of wireless telecommunication technology, a field that is occupied by federal law. So the federal government, through the Telecommunication Act of 1996, has stripped away certain items for cities, local governments to even consider. The small cell technology wouldn't work in this site, but it's not something that this council could consider. So with that, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my RF engineer to come and present his technical data, his... His information is going to begin at Tab B of your booklet and I would encourage you that perhaps ask Councilman Stone, since he is the only other guy in the room that understands us, his take on our data. So with that, I'll turn it over to Romel.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name is Romel Ilagan, 2413 Northwest 197th Street.
Can I pull the microphone closer to your mouth?
Sorry. 2413 Northwest 197th Street. I'm a senior RF engineer for T-Mobile and we are the responsible for designing and optimizing the Oklahoma City network. So another backstory, as early as May 2016, we are looking at the network and the forecasted growth of the network and we have determined that this area, coupled with upgrading the surrounding sites, would still require a new site. As David had mentioned earlier, building a new site is the last resort in capacity mitigation. So we have looked at the sites in the area. Actually, before I start with the presentation, with, can you please turn to Exhibit F, 001? So the three sites that we have, we were planning to mitigate the capacity. From 2016, we already did the upgrades. The upgrades entail, we're in, we are harvesting the legacy technology, GSM and UMTS, and using that spectrum to, for upgrading the LTE. So 4G network is what we are currently now and after harvesting the legacy technology, from 2016, the three sites that we are targeting to mitigate the capacity had been upgraded already. So with the data that we have current, and I'm going back to the slide on Exhibit B, this is some March data from 2017 to 2018, on the same month of March for those three sites. The network is still increasing traffic and, most importantly, increasing voice traffic and data traffic. In network design, we are, aside from traffic, we are also considering behavioral changes in how the network is being used. So right now, we are more data-centric with, the service that we are currently offering is, or at least most of the customer complaints is, "I'm getting slow network. My throughput speed is slow, my data is buffering." So that is because of congestion, that is because of traffic. And with all the upgrades that we have and all the surrounding sites mitigation, we're still getting those. And from the March data, it's very clear that the voice and data traffic are still growing almost exponentially. In the area, we don't have a coverage problem. That had been stated even in the past on the city planning. It's more on, really on the service, on the congestion. And we have, we have three sites surrounding the area. When we look at the existing towers for co-location, one is we are already using on 10th Street and the other two are very close to existing sites that will not be able to mitigate the capacity. Hence, we introduced the idea of building the new site. We did present a drive test data as per request and this really proves the coverage prediction that we don't have a coverage gap, but it's more on the service, like throughput and Slide, Exhibit B, page five, is the service boundary of the three cells and where the new site will be and what its cell boundary will be with respect to the existing sites. And this will be where it will take the traffic out of the three existing sites. I'm sorry, do you have any questions? Maybe I'm going too fast.
Councilman Stone, you've kind of been put on the spot. Do you have an opinion for us?
No, I've actually, I mean, I looked at the data and stuff. I was kind of excited when I heard this was coming up because I just got to look at some data I hadn't seen in a while, so.
I love that.
Yeah, I didn't have any other questions on it though. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we'll hear from James Cardinal, who is the site acquisition specialist, to walk through his analysis on the sites based upon the search ring.
James Cardinal, Site Acquisition Specialist, Fortune Wireless. And then he addressed 6402 Corporate Drive in Indianapolis, Indiana. We worked with the applicant for this project to acquire the site necessary for the tower subject to this application. And I'll be going over Exhibit E if you want to turn to that page. I begin my process after the RF engineers have identified a needed need for the tower. In this case, Exhibit E in your handout shows the location of the search ring that was provided by the RF engineer. As you can see here, the ring is small due to the urbanized area where the gap exists. And in my search, I identified five sites that are shown on Exhibit E. As you will see, I identified four of the sites that are not within the ring. I do this generally to find as many options as possible to present to the engineers for citing and ultimately, the technical needs determines the suitability of the sites I identify. I'll now go through each of those sites and explain my analysis for Alt 1 through 4 and then the site we actually ended up going with. Alt 1, in analyzing this site, it was clear that the site lacked the space necessary to locate a tower based upon the current use of the property. In addition, the site was rejected based upon RF technical criteria. This site was deemed not technically feasible to locate the tower. Alt 2, similarly to Alt 1, this site lacked the requisite space and was rejected based upon RF feasibility. 3, similar to Alt 1 and 2, this site was eliminated due to RF and technical deficiency reasons. Alt 4, even though a portion of this site falls within the search ring, the site lacked the requisite space for citing of the tower. And the primary candidate, which is the church that we went with, this was the only site that fit all the criteria necessary for the location of the needed tower. The site falls within the ring provided by the engineer and has the space needed for the tower and the associated equipment. That covers all the sites that we looked at for this project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
All right, and then the last speaker from our group is Bob Grace, who again is a MAI Designated Appraiser.
My name's Bob Grace. My address is 2708 Northeast 133rd Edmund, Oklahoma. I am, as David mentioned, I'm an MAI Designated Appraiser. I've got a state license with Oklahoma, which is an Oklahoma Certified General's License, which of the four levels, the Oklahoma State Certified General is the highest level of licensure. I have the MAI, the SRA designation and the CRE designation, Counselor of Real Estate. Those are the three of the highest real property designations provided nationwide and worldwide. I've been on the National Board of Directors for the Appraisal Institute out of Chicago, which is the nation's oldest and largest professional society. I've served on numerous committees, including the Education Committee, Strategic Planning Committee, several other directed boards along the way. I've been appraising since 1994, have a degree in finance and accounting from Oklahoma State University. I have developed opinions of value regarding proximity on numerous properties throughout the years, specifically to cellphone towers. We've probably developed eight or 10 opinions over the last 20-plus years. And the drivers of the market tend to be three or four different metrics. There's the sale price per square foot, there's the overall sales price, there's days on market and there's something called the sale price, sale price to list price ratio, which is, "I asked a dollar and I got 98 cents," which is typical standard negotiation tactic found in the market. So what we did, excuse me, in our latest proximity study that we developed was, first thing was we reviewed all available articles that were out there. The significant takeaway from that is that real estate is local. As you would imagine, what we would find in Orange County, California, would be significantly different than what we would find in Macomb, Oklahoma, or in this instance, in downtown Oklahoma City. So what we did was we developed some case study properties in and around north, central and northwest Oklahoma City. Those properties are consistent with the subject's neighborhood, consistent in terms of the age of the property, the square footage of the property, the market segment, meaning we have homes here that sell from roughly $150,000 to $300,000. The market segments for the case studies that we chose were consistent along those lines, also consistent in terms of age. Excuse me, we measured median sale prices from those neighborhoods of the recent sales. Let me back up just a minute. Those case study properties had monopoles, traditional monopoles, they were not stealth monopoles. Those four areas in north, central and northwest Oklahoma City with those traditional monopoles, the height ranged from about 100 feet to about 175, 185 feet in height. They were not stealth, as I mentioned. And we measured sale prices of properties near those cellphone towers. Without getting all in the weeds, the takeaway was pretty clear. The days on market was consistent. In other words, a house 2,000 feet away from the cellphone tower sold just as quickly as one within a couple hundred feet. The sale price to list price ratio was consistent, close and far from this non-stealth monopole. The sales price per square foot was consistent. In addition, the overall sales price was consistent. So the takeaways are pretty clear. The market does not take into account monopoles in their decision, cell phones, cellphone monopoles in their decision to buy or sell and it doesn't impact the sale price at the end of the day. That's basically it. I've reviewed a couple of the other studies. Like I mentioned, real estate is local. I think we've got the local data that clearly supports the fact that sale prices are not impacted. Any questions?
I just have one. And that study was just based on a raw monopole, right? Not a stealth pole? Correct?
Yes, yes, not a stealth pole, just a traditional monopole. Thank you.
I'll be brief. To your point, Councilman Stone, I think that perhaps even further bolsters the results that Mr. Grace found. If there's no impact on property values with a traditional steel monopole, presumably something that is stealth that blends in would have even less. So with that, that concludes all the evidence and testimony we have. I think we have proven our claim, if the council were to deny this, for an effective prohibition claim, that being the first prong that a gap exists. We believe the law clearly shows that the city would have to rebut that scientific data that we have put forward and secondly, that the site we have chosen and that this application is the least intrusive means necessary. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And Meg, there are three people who've signed up to speak, however you want to stage that.
If there aren't any, are there any questions? Because I'd like to hear from the neighbors.
I have one question. This is a 90-foot mono, is that correct?
I believe it's 90 feet and I believe, I think there's like 95 with a 5-foot lightning addition on the lightning pole on the top.
I noticed the photo simulations were 100-foot.
I think that's because that's the total height to the top of the lightning rod, but it's 95 to the top of what you could see with the naked eye.
All right, thank you.
Just to be clear, when you say there's a gap in coverage, you don't mean that there's a gap in cellphone service, there's a gap in going as fast as the company wants to go?
Yeah, so there's a gap in capacity and to the point, that specific topic's been litigated, AT&amp;T Mobility versus Village of Corales. And it states, "The significant service, coverage or capacity gap may be an area of insufficient outdoor, in-building or in-vehicle coverage, or it may simply be an area where service quality drops below acceptable service standards during peak, during periods of peak demand."
Which one of those are you seeing?
The congestion caused. The congestion caused by the build-out of this area has caused a significant gap in the capacity, below the acceptable levels.
Below the acceptable levels or not to be able to go as fast as you want to stream movies and?
Below the acceptable levels.
So for those watching, I think to cite this, you know, we need to be reminded that the location is extremely, in close proximity to the Plaza District, Pleasant, Tenpan, Gatewood. This Las Vegas neighborhood is right in, you know, the heart of an area that's just exploding in both density and data usage.
Kenny?
Yes, and also along those same lines, the cases say that the FCC's goal and purpose of the act is to allow providers to meaningfully compete with any other carrier and to avoid driving the industry toward a single-character carrier hindering competition.
That's the goal?
Of the federal law is to make sure that all these companies are able to compete with the other companies.
So we do have some neighbors here that would like to speak. As you come forward, I'd just like to say how grateful I am. I can't imagine how much time, because I know how much time I've spent, how much time the neighborhood has spent working on this issue, trying to craft solutions. They've been very open to meeting with me and meeting with the telecommunications company to try to craft some solutions. This is not perfect by any means and so as we go forward, I just want the neighborhood to understand how much we appreciate, how grateful we are and we know how important this is to you to get this right.
So are you, Michael?
I'm Sebastian.
Sebastian, okay. We'll start with you, Sebastian Davis, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Sebastian Davis in 2215 Northwest 18th Street. I do want to thank Councilwoman Meg Sawyers for the time that she has spent on this. Mr. Mayor and council members, this neighborhood has supported maps. It's comprised of a varied level of citizens, myself, I'm a research analyst. I have had a consulting contract with the University of Oklahoma. I currently have a contract as a data analyst for a statewide association of youth services agencies. I've been doing data work since oh, 1990s, working with various professionals, PhD candidates. I have no objection at all to experts being able to testify and I'm going to touch on that because I have a request. We had an expert witness that was going to speak to the adverse impact that a cellphone tower has on property values. That was a Realtor who has been practicing in our neighborhood for 20-plus years. However, her mother died two days ago and so she could not be here today. So if it is at all possible, we would like to be able to have an opportunity to present her so she can talk about what her expert opinion is on the adverse impact. her so she can talk about what her expert opinion is on the adverse impact of this tower on the property values of the homes indirectly affected. Realtors, there are a couple of issues here. Let's talk about this for a minute. Our objection, first of all, is with the whole process. We don't think that the planning department was very transparent. We don't think that the application itself has been transparent with respect to a number of issues. We don't know the basis for the denial of the alternative sites. We don't know what those alternative sites were offered with respect to rental prices per month payments for erecting a cellphone tower, whether it was not enough. We've heard that the current site is going to get $1,000 a month, but we've also heard prices of 2,500, as low as 400 a month. So we really have no idea on what basis the alternative sites were declined. We do know that in some other cities, tower, cellphone towers have been erected on top of buildings. We know that part of the congestion problem is because the city has encouraged development in the plaza district. And that's a great thing, because it draws people, it actually increases our property values to be that close to midtown. And to a burgeoning area like that, that gets a lot of foot traffic, that's what's driving this data thing, that's what's driving the congestion. Why can't a tower be built down there or on a building down there? Such as when I go to Tulsa and I want to go to Blaze Pizza or Taco Place on Cherry Street or 15th Street, I can see a cellphone tower on top of a building, which adequately meets the thing. Now here's the other issue. So we have a problem with the process. We think the city needs to be more proactive with respect to this issue of cellphone towers. We think that the city, it doesn't have an RF expert on staff or even under contract, even though the availability is there through different universities and engineering departments to be able to help this city assess. The city is basically in a position where it has no expert that can say whether anything that's been asserted, to what extent it's true, and to what extent is there a gap, is there coverage, to what extent is there an emergency here? That it needs to be taken care of immediately, or can it wait a year, two years down the line while the city has upon itself enough time to explore alternatives? Every one of the alternative sites that we were initially told about were within a half-mile of its current location, that they designated where they'd like to have it. Within another half-mile, we located a possible alternative site, Wheeler Park, which, lo and behold, is 600 square feet, which has enough of a setback then that's away from residential properties. Okay, so that's the first issue, is that we think the city ought to be more proactive. The second issue is with respect to the tower itself. Everything that Mr. Box told you about what cities could and could not do is correct, but it's through a selective selection of court cases from certain circuit courts. That's not all there is to it. A cursory, if you just Google case law with respect to municipal denials of cellphone tower applications, you will find cases that have gone to circuit courts where the cities have won. And that's the other thing that bothers us about this whole process, because at the planning commission people, the commissioners that we met with, Janice Powers and Asa Highsmith, and councilmembers that we met with, basically were saying, "Our hands are tied. Our legal department has told us, 'We cannot deny this. Our hands are tied. We can't do a thing.'" But you can, because there are court cases out there that support that. Even in the instance, this particular instance, where the nearest residential property is directly north of where this proposed tower is, and the tower 100 feet, and according to city code, they can add on another 20 feet. They can make it 110 feet. And they don't need approval to do that, if they want to put antennas up there. If it falls, or there's a catastrophe, it's going to be right on top of that residential home just directly north. There are two items in the city code that pertain. One is that it's got to be 300 feet from the nearest residential home, and that's the special exemption they're asking for. The other one, which is not in the application and not in any planning document, but is in city code, is there has to be a set off of 125% of the height of the tower, and that's a safety set off from the nearest residential property use. And this tower is going to be in violation of that. We're in tornado alley. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers documented approximately 100, I sent emails to all of you with all those documents, Appendix A, Appendix B, documentation of our concerns. There have been studies after studies that showed in a number of instances where cell towers have either collapsed, they have caught fire, they are subject to falling ice and debris, they are engineered to fall into pieces, but that's no guarantee of safety, and that's why we do not want it in the neighborhood. We're not a bunch of Luddites. We all love to have our cellphone, we want to have the coverage, we want 4G TVs and all the rest of it. We use this technology, but we do want it to be safe. And just imagine this, if this were in your backyard, this is the dimensions they're talking about for the base of this tower, from that wall to that wall, and from that wall to about the second row, that's going to be the base, 35 feet by 35 feet. Imagine that with 100 feet of your home. Now, they could have an expert come up here and say that it's not going to impact property values. Well, in our documentation, we listed all kinds of studies done by PhDs affiliated with universities that contradict that, including studies that were published in the Appraisers' Journal. So we feel like we've got plenty of grounds here to deny or at least postpone this decision while the city decides how best to meet this issue of the placement of cellphone towers in a way that neighborhoods are satisfied. You know, the first go-around, we had a whole bunch of neighbors, we had more than 60% of property owners and residents sign protests against this. At this point, though, a lot of people are feeling very discouraged. I think it's the city's obligation to alleviate some of that discouragement by engaging in a process that leads to some change where everyone is happy. They get a tower, they get to address the issue of capacity or coverage, and at the same time, neighbors are able to feel like they don't have to look outside their bedroom window and see this monstrosity right across the way. I mean, this thing's going to have, it'll have a seven-foot fence, and they've told us that they're going to have a tree screen around it, but it's going to be there anyway. And, you know, anecdotally, we cannot say that, you know, we can't talk about adverse impact on property values, because the court won't accept that. But courts will accept substantial evidence. And the meaning of substantial evidence is evidence that any reasonable person would accept as being an appropriate case for an argument. Okay? It's not the same as a criminal court standard of evidence. It's a lot less than that. Thank you all very much.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So I can, just Googling, I can see that you're right, that city councils are denying these all over the country, and that there are more cases than have been cited here today. Is there, and the one in Roswell versus T-Mobile seems to have been going on for years and years and years. Is there a specific court case that you think we should look at? Or just do as I've done and Google?
I can't think of, I did list in Appendix B, there was a recitation of court cases that I found that I thought were particularly pertinent, because they did not address issues that clearly the telecommunications act and the decisions of the Supreme Court have basically ruled as being out of bounds, such as, you know, health, adverse impacts on health, or, you know, just anecdotal stuff about dropped calls, or gaps in coverage, or slowdowns, that kind of thing. I tried to focus on issues where cities really had a leg to stand on.
So it seems like one issue is whether companies like T-Mobile could make improvements to their existing cellphone towers, which would have the same benefit, might be more expensive to them, versus building something like this in a neighborhood. Did that issue come up?
I don't recall that it did, okay? I mean, but I mean, I haven't seen every case, okay? There are some lawyers that specialize in this area, and they have put out blogs and journals with respect to the cases that they've had. But I tried to get as many as I possibly could. And there's been some variation in circuit courts with respect to their attitude about municipal denials, okay? It's not just a matter of law, but it's also of what kind of judges do you face when you're going through this process?
Okay, thank you.
I can tell you, just speaking to my personal experience, the last thing we ever wanted to do was build a new tower because of the cost. I mean, it's a lot easier to add carriers, add sectors, whatever you want to do to another site to try and further divide that traffic. But at some point, you reach a spot where you go, "That's it, all we can do is add a site in, offload it." And I'm not saying that's the case here, but I can tell you from my standpoint, and I've been through, I don't know how many site reviews and capacity reviews, but the last thing you would go for is, "We've got to build a site, because that's the only thing that's going to offload this traffic." And frankly, I'm surprised we aren't seeing more of these, just based on the different ways people now are using their cell phones. I mean, now everyone's using them for TV. And, you know, if you think back to not that long ago, you know, if you wanted to watch a clip on YouTube, you knew it was going to sit there and buffer for a while. I mean, trying to get streaming data on it across one is crazy. So the model of data use on cell phones has got to be just blowing through the roof on that. And I think it'll just continue to grow. That's just my experience. I think, I really think you guys have done a good thing here, a great thing, in looking at the tower design and getting away from the strict monopole. I mean, that's an expensive piece of work that, you know, that they have proposed here. And for you guys to be able to do that piece, I think is very commendable. So kudos to you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmen.
Thank you. Claudia Hunter?
I'm Claudia Hunter. I live at 2215 Northwest 18th Street, Oklahoma City. And I appreciate the mayor and the council for listening to us. When I came through the door and after I heard all the experts' witnesses, I didn't know if I'd have the courage to stand up here. The credentials I have are, I've lived in the neighborhood for 41 years. And we in our neighborhood will have to live with this every day and look at it if you approve it. And that's really all I want to ask, is could you approve this in your neighborhood? Would you want to live with this every day? And if you can vote that way, then vote that way. I think he did a great job of covering all the technical issues. I'm not technical. But I did want to appeal to the fact that our entire neighborhood, and like he said, many of them have given up, because they don't think that the ordinary man has a chance against big corporations, attorneys, and expert witnesses. Thank you for your time.
Michael McPherson? Is Michael here? Okay. Well, that's all the people who signed up. Councilwomen?
I think, as you can see, the neighborhood has spent a tremendous amount of time working on this issue. And Mr. Davis in particular, and a couple of others, have committed incredible effort. And you made a comment, Sebastian, that I really appreciated. You said you'd like some time to make everybody happy. And I'm absolutely convinced that there's no way, in this case, we're going to be able to make everybody happy. This is a very difficult situation. And Kenny, would you mind sort of sharing an opinion? We do rely very heavily through this process on the advice of our municipal council. And while I know you're frustrated that you feel like we're not being supportive enough of the neighborhoods, you know, there was another question about the fact that the city maybe is approaching this that we can't do anything. We can do things, but we can't know what the outcome is going to be. And I think we've got some expert advice on what the likely outcomes would be. So Kenny, maybe you could talk to us about that.
Yes, there are, excuse me, there are actually two different stages of what you would have to look at. First, you would look, a court would look at, if you deny it, whether or not it's supported by, the denial's supported by substantial evidence based on the criteria in the zoning code. So, for example, if you had some, an expert come in and say, on the other side, "There is a 50% chance that this tower will fall," and you believe that, then possibly you could deny it based on that, because the criteria in the ordinance is that it's supposed to be 300 feet from any residential use. But it has to be evidence in the record. Let's say you had that evidence, you denied it on that basis, then stage two would be the effective prohibition issue. That can trump a denial based on substantial evidence in the record. Now, you can amend the zoning code and require the applicant to prove that there'll be effective prohibition. So that would be in the zoning code. But in any event, either way, whether it's in the code or you're just doing it under federal law, you have to have substantial, you have to have substantial evidence in the record to disprove that. So you'd need substantial, you'd need an RF expert to come in and say, "No, their evidence is wrong. They don't have a significant gap in coverage, et cetera." Then you'd also have to, you'd really want them to submit it as part of their application to show what alternative sites they submitted. Now, they've done that voluntarily here as part of their case, but you'd want it in the code so that then the city could have its experts go out, interview all those other owners of the sites where the alternative sites that were considered, et cetera. So you have to basically disprove it on the record to be able to deny it. So, I mean, based on what we've heard today, essentially, we would lose in court if you denied it, because we haven't disproven that it would be an effective prohibition. There's no evidence that you can rely on to say it's not an effective prohibition.
And that is the situation, you know, in which we find ourselves and that we've talked about so much in the past, is that we are very likely to lose in court, given the facts, given the testimony, and given the federal laws. And so, you know, I'm really, as you know, I'm incredibly torn about, I'm not supportive of, I wish this didn't have to happen, but I do believe we're challenged with just how much we can do. And, you know, when we talk about the neighbors having given up, you know, I'm really disappointed in that. I think that many of the neighbors appreciated the compromise that we did reach. And just sort of to reiterate some of the things we've discussed, the tower was originally, I think, 70 feet from the McAllister's house. And that number was increased by 50 feet, so it's 120 feet if my math is correct. And that's essentially the 125% wiggle factor that you have to have in case the tower, you know, were to fall. The fact that it is a stealth tower rather than a mono tower is a significant upgrade. And from the photos that we're seeing visually, I do think over time, I hope over time, it will blend in. There is landscaping, there is fencing. And so I think, not that I like this, but I have heard from some neighbors that they appreciated the compromises that we've made. appreciated the compromises that we've made. And so we find ourselves in the same difficult place we did once before. I just, I, I think the ultimate outcome is the same. I, I just don't think we have the ability, based on federal law, and I'm, I'm listening to counsel, even though I wish this was not the outcome, and I'm not in favor of having to do this. I wish we didn't have to. So that's where I am.
Do you? Okay. Meg? Do you wish to make a motion?
Can I say?
Okay. Well, at some point, someone's gonna have to.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
As Meg said, a lot of ways, this is a carbon copy of the last time that we had this. And, and one of the arguments that the neighbors made in that case was, you guys really don't know, I mean, you have to trust the corporation's opinion that this is the only altern, that this is the only site that's possible, and that all these other alternative sites, which are just right outside the circle, are not gonna work. And here today, we have neighbors saying, you guys have no experts? You're just trusting what the company is saying? There's no, there's no independent third party saying, yes, this is the only site that this can work at, and these three other sites that are just right outside the circle, those definitely will not work. And so if Todd's right, and I think he is, that more of this is almost certainly coming as cellphones and iPads and replace our televisions and the demand for data is gonna increase and increase and increase, I guess the question for the future is, oh, and for today also, how, what third party can we get to help us? Or are we just going to rely on the corporation telling us, you have to trust us, this is the only site that'll work? That's, this is the exact same conversation we had last time, all the, you know, however many years went by, and now we're having a carbon copy conversation today.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, just a couple of things, based on, and I think Ed makes a good point there for moving forward, but I can tell you, looking at their, their search ring and looking at their cell density, their existing cell density, that's a pretty good-sized search ring. And, I mean, when you just sit here and look at the density on that map, that, that location sticks out as, within that ring at least, as just about the only viable location I could even see for the base, for the base stations to reside at. Back to Ed's point, though, I, I do think we'll start to see probably more of these, and it might be a good idea in the future to, to, I don't know, have somebody, I guess, be able to review that data. But, I mean, I felt pretty comfortable when I looked at the search ring, and like I said, I've probably looked at a thousand of these things. And that, the stealth piece of it, I keep going back to the images that they put in in section C, I think, yes. I, you know, I can't help but sit there and think, when I look at that, and I, and I could understand the residents seeing something that they aren't used to seeing there, and that, that being troubling, but to be honest with you, if, if I was in these locations and glanced over and, and saw that pole, number one, I'm not gonna be really aware it's a cellphone tower. I think it looks like a church bell or something else there located on the property, and, I mean, it's almost kinda neat, to be honest with you, to see it there. And I know that me saying that probably rubs some people the wrong way, but if I wasn't there not knowing that it wasn't there now, if I drove by and saw it, I would think, wow, that church did a really neat thing there. Just, just my opinion.
And on, on the whole expert thing for future, I mean, is there not some way of, some sort of training that we can do, like send somebody from the planning department that, and make them an expert, or is, is there not?
Now, I think you're gonna have to actually either hire an RF engineer on staff or contract with one.
Okay.
And then you're also gonna want sufficient staff or contractors who can go out and check the alternative locations. And you'd want to amend the code too, to make them upfront prove that they have a significant gap, and also that they've taken efforts to find an alternative location.
Okay.
And make them submit all their data for that, and then, then you go, can go out and double-check it and have people either agree with them or dispute it.
Okay. So those scenarios that seem probably the best would be to contract with somebody?
Yes.
Okay.
So then, going forward, manager, could we, I see you taking notes, could we move forward with both of those things?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. This is still on item 9B. Any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to, I'm sorry, seven to two.
Thank you.
Moving on to 9C. This is ordinance on final hearing. This was the third of three steps in our process. This is relating to the zoning and planning code and the general schedule of fees, as itemized here on page 21 of the printed agenda. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, of course.
I should have probably done this two weeks ago, but I wasn't maybe paying as much attention to this. But in my ward, I have a couple of situations where we have breweries or taprooms that are under construction and are anticipating being open before this October 1st date, which is spelled out in the ordinance that provides an effective date of October 1st.
Okay.
Normally, an ordinance that we put into effect would take place 30 days from the date of adoption. And the only reason, yeah, for appeal purposes.
Snatching the state law? Yes, 30 days from adoption. It's the city charter unless you pass it with the emergency.
Right. But, but this extends the date of effectiveness.
Yeah, the, why is the effective date October 1st?
Passed the 30 days to October 1st, and the reason for that was because of the changes in the state law. We were just trying.
Apparently, state law, they're already allowing them to, to operate.
Right.
That's why they're already allowing them to operate.
Right. So we were trying to be consistent with the date of the state law.
Correct.
But it is.
The express date of state law.
Its effect is causing a couple of these taprooms, breweries that are under construction are hoping to open before October 1st to not be able to do so.
And it will be.
We can amend the effective date on the floor here if you want.
That's what I was hoping to proper, an amendment that would change this to the standard 30 days.
Move to amend, delete it.
Just delete the effective date, so it'll, it'll be 30 days.
Yeah, it'll be 30 days automatically.
Okay.
If you just.
If we delete the date of October 1st.
Move to amend, correct.
All right. So may I make a motion?
Want to make that motion?
That we delete the effective date of October 1st.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that topic? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes on the motion to delete the effective date. Passes unanimously. All right. We're back on the ordinance as amended. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously as amended. All right. Now we're on 9D. This is ordinance on final hearing. This is also the third of our three steps. This was on the agenda for two previous council meetings. This relates to the general schedule of fees, as itemized here on page 22 of the printed agenda. Would, I would entertain a motion or, or discussion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. 9E. This is the first of three steps in an ordinance. This is the introduction, and we will set this for public hearing on August 14th and potential final adoption on August 28th. Do we need a, a vote on this, Francis, to just?
Yes.
Recognize that we introduced it? Okay. I'll take a motion then to introduce this ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I note here that this has an effective date of October 1st, so that may be something we want to look at. And does Bob want to talk about this particular ordinance?
Just to give you, Bob will give a brief overview of this.
That'd be great. Cool.
Yeah, just briefly, this is a follow-up to an ordinance that was adopted in April that addressed the state law amendment that allowed retail operations to stock and set up their establishment and sell wine and beer beginning October 1st. And so this ordinance is going to remove the interim tag that we put on those original ones after it's effective October 1st. Plus, it makes a few small changes to a couple of the, the titles in the fee structure. So it's really just a cleanup, follow-up to that April ordinance.
And the date of October 1st is correct in this one?
Right.
Because it will take effect with the state law.
Because that all, October 1st and anything after that will be subject to these fees, and it won't have the interim tag on it.
Okay. Any other questions for Bob? All right. I forget if we had a motion and a second on this.
Yes, we do.
We do? Okay. Well, is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we are on 9F1. This is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. There are four. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion for item 9F2, a resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated.
Yeah.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion in the council? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on item 9G1. This is the public hearing regarding unsecured structures, except for the two that were stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on these items? Seeing none. Is there any, I would entertain a motion from the council on item 9G2, the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured.
Yes.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We're now on 9H1. This is the public hearing regarding abandoned buildings, except for the two that were stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who is wishing to speak on this? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion for 9H2, the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Goodbye.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the council? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we are at item 9I, joint resolution with Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving the Convention Center Hotel project with Omni, et cetera. And stepping to the podium is Kathy O'Connor from the Alliance, so I presume you would like to make a brief presentation.
Good morning. The item on the agenda today is the next step in implementing the redevelopment agreement and the funding plan for the Convention Center Hotel. In the redevelopment agreement, it was contemplated that the city would enter into an economic development agreement that would spell out the way in which the incentives would be provided to Omni to construct the Convention Center Hotel. So just as a recap of the things that we have done in the past related to this project, in July of 2017, you approved the funding plan and the redevelopment agreement. We also amended the downtown MAPS TIF district project plan in March. We created the new TIF District Number 13 also in March. And the budget allocations for this project from the tax increment financing districts were approved on March 13th as well. City council authorized the issuance of debt in March of 20, also in March of 2018, and OCEDT subsequently approved that debt issuance in May of this year. Just to go over some of the key terms that are in the economic development agreement, and again, these were also in the redevelopment agreement that you approved a year ago. The city portion of the contribution to the project is not to exceed $85.4 million. The agreement does require a minimum tax payment each year from Omni of $1.4 million, and annual land payments of $200,000. There is the opportunity for the city to share in the revenues of the hotel once a net operating income hurdle is met after the fifth year. There are other agreements that were, are necessary to close this transaction that this resolution also authorizes the mayor to execute. Those include the hotel parking easement, which, if you recall, Omni is to get 450 spaces in the new parking garage that they have agreed to pay market rate for. There is a restrictive covenant as well that restricts the use of the Cox Convention Center, so that one year after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the new Convention Center, the Cox Center can no longer be used as the city's main convention facility. And also, there is also a separate memorandum of agreement detailing the no-subsidy zone that was a part of the economic develop, of the redevelopment agreement.
Kathy, can I just ask about that word, "main" Convention Center? It can still be used by groups.
It can still be used, but it cannot be used as the city's main convention center.
But it can't be designated as our convention center.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So there are several actions that are upcoming once this agreement, or after this resolution is approved by the city council. Those include closing on the real estate transaction, and we contemplate that that will be completed in the next few weeks. Following the real estate closing, there will be the sale of the annual appropriation bonds that you authorized in March. The closing on the bond sale will be several weeks after that. We are working to schedule a groundbreaking for the Convention Center Hotel. We hope that that will be held in September or early October, depending on getting everybody's schedules to align. And then again, the estimated construction period for the hotel is about two years. And the parking garage is, is also envisioned to be constructed and opened at about the same time that the hotel is, hopefully a little bit sooner. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions about the project.
Yeah. Kathy? I, I was just reading through this, and I noticed that it, it seems that you've moved this to Ward 6, or is this still in Ward 7?
It is in Ward 7.
All right.
So.
I was wondering if you moved.
I know that it's in Ward 7, and I, now that you said that, I noticed the memo's wrong.
Okay. All right. I thought I would.
I know it's in Ward 7.
Okay.
I didn't think you read your agenda that carefully.
I do read it, I promise.
You know, that, there's, that's a lesson from a long time ago. You all always pay attention to things that are in your wards.
Any other questions for Kathy? Okay. Thank you. And we have this resolution for consideration. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I'm gonna speak on the side.
Move for approval.
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't have a slip from you, but we.
I'll sign up, it's gonna bleed out to Esther.
Find that.
She actually did. Says 9I. So, okay. Sorry, we missed that somehow, so.
Yes, Michael Washington.
Mm-hmm.
2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. First of all, I don't believe this rubbish needs to pass. I mean, now, of course now, I mean, we know it's probably going to, but let me get my spin on it. Now, according to what this lady here just spoke about, each year, now can I see that graphic again where this $84 million and all that? There you go. Of course, it's not to exceed, now, the terms, the city's terms as far as their amount, it's not to exceed $85,400,000. Now, again, I don't see anywhere in here in the writings how much all this whole project's supposed to amount to or come to conclusion of. Can anybody tell, Mama, how much? Can anybody, can you tell me, Mama? How much? Since we paying 85, how much are the other people paying?
$150,000.
And they're paying $150 million, so we're talking about roughly 200 and 30-some-thousand, 200 and 30-some-million project here. And of that, they're supposed to be paying their share of it each month, that this bill around $1,600,000 yearly. Now, is that, is that correct on that as well? We have 1.4 million, and then, then you have the 200,000, so again, that's 600, $1,600,000 there. Okay, now, I don't believe this, first of all, needs to pass. And for the most part, I'm glad you brought this up, sir. Ward 6, I don't know how that could be possibly in oversight. Everything else here seems to be up and running until we get to this particular point here. Now, we, we may need to look further into this, and whether maybe they've silently or clandestinely moved from Ward 7 to Ward 6. You know, I mean, obviously, like I said, for you to be able to catch it, you probably, you beat me to the punch because my eyes almost lit up. Okay, now, this is enough taxpayers' dollars being spent downtown here in Oklahoma City. We need to redirect, rechall this money geared toward promoting the effectiveness of our schools, our education system, and neighborhoods which are being over, left out abundantly so, for the purpose of greedy investors who feel they can come to Oklahoma City and get their rub. City and get their rub and feel of free money available. Now, Michael Washington, too, has some ideas for some good investments. Why don't y'all give me some of that money? Maybe I can present something and y'all give me some of it since it's free tax increment money here that this lady here is over. Okay, and I haven't seen any part of this money, quote-unquote, in a district that this gentleman here has briefly taken over in Ward 7, where any monies have been from the tax increment financed pot, pot, has been given to the African-American community other than investors from the outside coming in, building their businesses in our community, and yet at the same time, when they build a business, taking the money right back out with them. You may be creating a few jobs, but you're not keeping the money in our community. And again, this is not keeping money in our community by us having to pay such a stiff amount of money, $85 million? Are y'all kidding me? You might as well just go ahead and pay for the whole Omni Hotel. This is my point about it.
Okay, thank you. You just hit three minutes.
Okay, there, thank you. And now, we need, like I said, let me, in closing, we need to reconsider this, and Mr. Cooper, we need to find out if this project is really in Ward 7 or not. So how can we do that, sir?
She's already stated that...
Not stated, that means, that's an obvious mistake, sir. She could be mistaken.
It's in the record. It's in the record.
Michael, it's a far more significant issue, and I'd ask that you, when you are talking about this in the community and when you talk about this and other issues, recognize that when they say $85 million, a lot of that money has to be paid upfront, and they're not including the interest cost.
Oh.
The number is actually much bigger than $85 million.
That's what I'm getting at.
On this and in future projects, when you're studying them and talking to people about them, always ask about the interest cost because they hide that number.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's what I was wanting to get...
It's not $85 million.
It should be exposed to all of us. Don't just give me a part reason. You see, that's what I'm getting at. So you're not being truthful again, and which Meg gives him a strong point again in saying whether or not we're in Ward 6 or not. Because like I said, even like he said, I'm getting ready to close here, there are the interest fees in relationships are, like you said, we'll probably be actually paying $200 million ourselves when it's over with. Well, now, I mean, roughly speaking, I mean, I may be exaggerating a bit, but like I say, hidden fees, this is not a complete state of awareness of what's going on here, sir. So how can y'all even approve of something here in a development which you don't even have all the facts that's stated to here, even for the resident? I mean, I'm paying $85 million. Like I said, I buy popcorn, I pay taxes, I got car, I pay gas when I go by. You understand me? So why should you give me only portions of and not give me a total understanding of what my taxpayer dollars and the whole city of Oklahoma City? That's really rude and totally untruthful and unfair to the public who's spending their tax harder earned dollars to, so that a few investors can say, oh, we run downtown now, we own it.
Okay.
And thank you, sir, for that. Definitely, I will definitely get into that area. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
Okay. Got a motion to approve in a second. Is there any further discussion on the council? Okay, seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes 7 to 2. Okay. Moving on to 9J1, resolution authorizing and directing the municipal counselor to enter into a settlement and general entry of judgment in regarding to City of OKC versus Harris Rentals. Kenny, do we need executive session?
No.
Okay, I would entertain, we've got a motion in a second on the resolution, item 9J1. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9K1, this is claims recommended for denial. Kenny, I presume we do not need executive session. Is there anyone here to speak on these items? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion to deny the claims. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the council? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 10A1, claims recommended for approval. Kenny, I presume we do not need executive session. Is there anyone here to speak on these claims? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion. Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we are now on item 11. Items from council? We'll start with Ward 1.
Yeah, there is a resurfacing project in Ward 1 going on. It's on Northwest 23rd, east of Sarah Road, and goes all the way to Overholster Drive. There's a lot of old and new housing in, in the area. It's a road that's needed to be repaved. So I just wanted to mention that for people who live in that area. The work is being done by our Public Works Street Crews, and it's being funded by Public Works Funds. The base stabilization began two weeks ago, and resurfacing began over the last few days and will be complete next week, and then the striping will happen a few weeks after that. So this is a project that I've mentioned to Eric numerous times and other, other people who live and drive in the area, and I think it's a, it's a good project, especially because it's, it connects Route 66 Park to, it's the, how you get to Route 66 Park. And I can't imagine trying to ride a bike on how it was, so thank you to Eric and the Public Works Department for prioritizing this project.
Thank you. Councilman Shadid?
I've had a few weeks to reflect on a few items. I think you know that I was deeply, deeply disturbed by both the Boathouse Foundation allocation and the Santa Fe Parking Garage decision. I watched that meeting last, a couple of weeks ago. To me, it's really brought to a head a lot of issues that have brought me sadness and fear about what's happening to the council over a number of years, and again, it's bringing it to a head. I think in every city in America, you have this tug of war between a representative democracy, people elected, elected officials, and ideally, we make, we come here and we decide what's best without influences of donations to us or corruption, and we just decide what's best versus movement towards a plutocracy or government by the wealthy, where a few wealthy people are basically running economic development in a city. I think every, it's not unique to Oklahoma City, but I think in Oklahoma City, there's three things that are severely tilting things towards the latter, towards a plutocracy. One is corruption. The second is a lack of transparency. And the third is a severe imbalance, which is going to increase over the next nine months, between the council and the city manager's office. This is a council-manager form of government. Ideally, the council makes laws, makes policy, and the city manager executes it. In the real world, that's not exactly how, how it works. We are in uncharted territory in the history of Oklahoma City, which is roughly 130 years old. In the first 110 years, nobody served as city manager for more than six years, right? And you generally had a city council that had, was more experienced and had been there longer than the city council. Now, many of us lament the situation in Oklahoma City Public Schools, where you have this rapid turnover of superintendents, and their Oklahoma City Public Schools is constantly having to deal with turnover. Here, we have the opposite extreme, where you have extreme consolidation of power in someone who's getting ready to start their 19th year, who's unelected. I don't think there's anybody else in the city of Oklahoma City, or maybe the state of Oklahoma, that has as much power that's not elected by the people. In, I think it's important to deal with it now because, say, next February with the elections, Meg's 10 years of experience will be gone, my eight years of experience will be gone. You have two neophytes in our seats, you have a neophyte in Ward 7, you will have a mayor in his first year. If David and/or Mark were to lose, I mean, you could have as many as six new people on the council that are supposed to be managing or a balance of power with the city manager's office. That, that I don't think is going to happen. I don't think it's happened in the past, and I think it, it has the potential to intensify and worsen. The city manager is appointed, all department heads, except maybe chief city, all assistant city managers. The days of those who were expressed opposition and even disdain, or, and were willing to voice those, like Russell Claus, those, those people are gone. And the city manager, I believe, is, is really joined at the hip with the financial power brokers and elite in the city, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. And they are able to effect change and have disproportionate influence on taxpayer dollars and economic development and city assets through the city manager's office. I want to be clear that I think Jim is, will be a giant in Oklahoma City history, just on water alone, just on what he's accomplished. When they've forgotten all of us and all the issues that we talked day-to-day, they'll remember Jim because of the water and what he has secured for generations to come. And I think we all owe him an unbelievable amount of gratitude for that. But turnover assists the city manager's office in consolidating power. So does corruption, because once the council loses autonomy, once the council, you know, with, with Trump acting like a puppy dog to Putin, we've had comprobate introduced into the public discourse, where people have things that they can, that they can use to keep somebody loyal or to blackmail somebody with. And so you, so that elected body loses its autonomy. And that, we have had a comprobate problem. We had a letter from John Pettis Sr. addressing, for example, the streetcar vote. That, to me, was the first moment I, I felt we had a comprobate problem, because you had African-American pastors, the NAACP, asking for a four-week continuance on the streetcar route. Since Meg recused herself, John was the, was the deciding vote, and incredibly just sat silent through the one hour, one and a half hour debate, said nothing, and then, and then didn't vote for the continuance, wouldn't allow a continuance, and despite the pleas from the NAACP. Even though John and I had had conversations, and I felt personally, that he felt and told us he was going to vote with us, and felt, I think personally, but something wasn't allowing him, him to vote with his heart. When Dennis Box was coming to us, saying that he was putting, sliding pieces of paper across to the Kim Ray CEO, saying you have to use the, these contractors, when Russell Perry, Kevin Perry, Joe Clydes are telling us that in the first week, some, they took two women with him in the back, allegedly photographed him, and had comprobate onto him in the first week, I don't understand why, when he has felony charges filed, that the, that the response from the city manager's office is that the charges are unrelated to his behavior in office, which gives the impression that there's not corruption, and it is now being used in, in campaigns. We had a mountain of circumstantial evidence that something was very wrong. I mean, I, Sullivan telling us, John Pettis Sr. and Jr. demanding, intimidating property owners to lower their prices. It goes on and on and on. And what was our response when we, when we knew there was a problem? We appointed him to the Economic Development Trust. It's the last thing you would do, over Pete White's objections. Why did we reward that? We, we basically said, if you vote the right way, if you vote this way, if you stay quiet, then other things will be ignored. And John, I think, knew that he wasn't going to get called on some of the things that David Prater eventually called him on, because he knew the exact same thing was happening with Mick. Mick, through, in a much more sophisticated way, and, and probably completely legal, was able to conduct a scheme where with Lee Allen Smith calling all the financial power brokers, solicits hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in donations for a documentary. So, so potentially, allegedly collects hundreds and hundreds of thousands and potentially only spends 50 to 100,000. Now, even if that's legal, that's corrupt. And it gives coverage to corruption of others, and it makes it impossible to call people out, and the council then loses its autonomy. The council then is not coming to the table and just deciding on what's best for the people, what they individually think is best for the people. We have lost the ability to have that balance of power with the city manager's office. As bad as corruption is towards that tilting the, the power structure, the, the lack of transparency is worse, because what that is doing is depriving the public from the process, and it's only us in, in the, in the equation. The purpose of these serial meetings, where four, three or four of us meet at 8:00 AM before the city council meeting, and then the city manager and/or Kathy O'Connor meets with us afterwards, the primary purpose, I believe, is to keep the public, to suppress public knowledge of economic development projects. By doing it this way, it allows the city manager to minimize the information that's presented to us, to withhold information to the council, because the media and the public are not getting to scrutinize that information. By not allowing us to take written materials out of those meetings, you're not allowing any record, even when journalists have talked to us, they've noticed we don't even remember the same things out of these meetings. So, city manager makes short 10, 15-minute presentations on very, very complex projects. We only hear what he and/or Kathy Connor wants us, want us to hear, and the public, and there's no public process to scrutinize those contentions. Two recent examples. One, the Boathouse Foundation. There's no defense. It was the meeting, I didn't know that the meeting took place, actually, so that's what led to the confusion. I was in the mental health meeting with Oklahoma City Public Schools. I didn't know that there were two different meetings on May 15th, right in the middle of budget presentations, in which we talked privately about a $1.3 million allocation from the general fund to the Boathouse Foundation. It's not in November, it's not in December, when you could say, okay, we're, we're in a crisis and we have to have this meeting. It's right in the middle of budget discussions. You have week after week after week of department head giving presentations about the budget, and right in the middle of that, we have these private meetings, hidden from the public, where we're going to make this $1.3 million allocation, and then we put it on the consent docket on July 3rd, the day before a major holiday, with no presentation scheduled. No defense. It's too easy. So let's talk about one that's more complicated, the Santa Fe Parking Garage. We're, I don't know what, what was said in the May 15th meeting. I heard the July 3rd meeting. I was told, as I'm sure you were, Cotter Tower's a dog. It will not work without parking. We're going to save Cotter Tower because we're going to, we're going to do this deal. Bank First approached us, right, saying they have to have parking to make Cotter Tower work. And they approached us after the bankruptcy court awarded them on April 30th. So that's, that's the contention, is that, let's go through the timeline. January 15th, marketing for the Cotter Tower commences from the bankruptcy court. February 2nd, the Copta Board meets an executive session, called by couch. City manager presents to the Copta Board that, something that, about a sale, right? What was the reason to do it on February 2nd? What happened to make Copta Board need to meet an executive session on February 2nd? I think it's because the bankruptcy proceedings were commenced. They sent out financials to like 2,000 different potential buyers, and things were in process. And Bank First, Mark Beffer was a competitor, people were making this effort to put bids together. So on February 22nd, CBRE offering, announcement is made. On April 6th, 11 submitted offers were made. So ask yourself how much we heard about the 11 entities, other, or 10 entities other than Bank First that made offers? How much do we know about that? And then how much do we know on April 20th about the seven finalists who were told to make best and final offers? How much do we know? Because, because the way it was presented to, to me was, this is it. Bank First, we're going to, Bank, Cotter Tower's a dog, we've got 30 days of due diligence, we've got to, we've got to do this now. And, and, but we never heard about the other six, and what kind of parking requirements they wanted or needed, or how much they would have paid for the Santa Fe Parking Garage. Didn't hear a word about that. And then on April 30th, Bank First is awarded, told that they have the best, they have the best offer. And one of their strengths was that they were, they had no financing contingency. They had no contingency. But in their subsequent due diligence papers, and they're going to do 30 days of due diligence, in their, they say nothing about parking, right? So the way that they have an advantage during the bankruptcy proceedings is that they have no contingency. But what we're told is, not only do they have a contingency, this work, this deal absolutely cannot work unless they get the Santa Fe Parking Garage and the Karchmer Garage. If that doesn't happen, it cannot work. But if that's true, if that's a make or break contingency, why wasn't that in the due diligence papers? Why wasn't that part of the bankruptcy proceedings? Why don't they tell CBRE and the bankruptcy judge, hey, this is our offer, 23 million, assuming we can get the parking taken care of? They don't mention the parking. So here's what they would have us believe, one of two scenarios. Bank First goes through this whole process, does bids, figures out what it's going to cost. Right after you guys voted on this two weeks ago, you saw their elaborate designs for Right after you guys voted on this two weeks ago, you saw their elaborate designs for Cotter Tower. They went through all this, right? And they had no idea whether they were going to get parking or not. They had never approached the city of Oklahoma City until after April 30th. When I talked with Ford Price and city manager, they told me that the first time that they had talked was the second and third week of June. Then they backed it up when they figured out that they had talked to you guys on May 15th. So they're saying that between April 30th and May 15th is when Bank First first approached the city of Oklahoma City about the parking garage. I don't believe that. Either Bank First is so dumb and so irresponsible that they deserve to lose their $100,000 payment on their due diligence, if that's really what they did, or much more likely, they had already talked to the city manager's office, they had already talked, they already had this deal worked out when they were going through bankruptcy, when they were competing with the other six people, making a final and best offer, they already knew. They didn't have to talk about parking because it was already worked out. That's my belief, right? Because the other is just unbelievable. So, this is an example of the kind of things that when the May 15th meeting happened, and I even asked you all, right, when I got wind of it, I didn't even know you guys had met, I asked from items from council, hey, if there's, we've sold four parking garages to corporate entities. If we're going to do it again, let's put it out there for the public to scrutinize. Nobody said a word. I said, David, do you have a problem with that? David said, I don't have a problem with that. Let's put it out early. No, we didn't do it. David, we need more, you can't give him accolades for putting it out on Wednesday, which is really me demanding it, and then me putting it out in the media, for giving the public six days. We need you. You've been a champion of openness and transparency in the legislature. We need, we cannot give accolades for six days of notice. The public needs more. They need a month, 30 days. What is unreasonable about that? But the public would have started to unravel this. The media was starting to figure this stuff out if we had more than four days' notice. Because what happens over and over and over is that the public hears about it on Friday afternoon, and then Tuesday, we vote on it, and then it's gone. There's no time, we move on. And that's by design. And these serial meetings, which I believe are absolutely illegal, and the Attorney General opinions, and the Supreme Court comments, that the public deserves to be part of the deliberation process, not just the up or down vote on a Tuesday. They deserve, and the Supreme Court demands, and the Attorney Generals have demanded, that the public be part of that process. Let the media, let the public hear what we're hearing, right? We absolutely had the votes for the Boathouse Foundation. There's no way the city council is not going to vote for that. Why hide it? The only reason we did that was to hide it from the public. Same thing with the parking garage, probably. So why not put it out there for the public? You already have the votes, probably. But let's let the public and the media scrutinize all this, and let's not just base our decisions on these 10, 15-minute meetings where we're being told, I'm always in the later meeting because I'm not a morning person, I don't get here before council, so we're told what the morning group told us, right? So basically, we're circumventing the Open Meetings Act because Couch and/or Kathy O'Connor and/or Brent are telling the second group what the first group's problems were, or what their concerns were. It's absolutely true.
That is totally false.
That's your experience? My experience over the last seven and a half years is very, very different.
With all due respect.
No, no, no.
I respect you, but that is totally false.
Have you been in all the second meetings to be in a place to say that?
I've been in first, I've been in second, I've been in both.
You haven't been in all of them? It's just everybody, you know what? That's your opinion. Everybody just tell the truth, and the truth will set us free.
And all I'm doing, the only point I'm making, Ed, I have a lot of respect for, is that I want the record to be clear that, in my opinion, that has never, ever occurred.
That's your opinion? Absolutely, and I respect that. In my experience, it's happened a lot, a lot. And I think when the people and the judge hear the evidence, they will come to the conclusion that we are circumventing the Open Meetings Act. And I got, and it's not, and the implications are so far beyond just the city of Oklahoma City. I got an email, and I talked yesterday with the city councillor at the city of Norman, doing the exact same thing. She is disgusted. They look at her like she has two heads, she said. And finally, she feels vindicated. This is happening in municipalities throughout the state of Oklahoma. It's happening on public boards throughout the state of Oklahoma.
That's permitted by law, Ed.
No, it isn't.
We permit it under the Open and Meeting Act.
It is not.
We are not doing anything wrong. And you know, you said something interesting. You remember when the speaker was up here about the tower? Said, sir, is there a specific case that we should look at? And you need to look at the case law on this. We have the right to do what we are doing. You will lose on the deliberation standard, you will lose on the consensus standard because there's no deliberation, there's no consensus. What you're proposing is you don't like the form of government that we have that works wonderfully. What you want to do is you want to change it. And if you want to change that, if you want to change the Open Meeting Act, you need to go to the state legislature. So the reason I say, you asked about a case, before you file suit and waste hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxpayer money, I would beg you to sit down with Kenny, and to sit down with me, and let's look at the case law. Because you're not going to win. You are not going to win this lawsuit.
I have discussed this with Kenny for years.
Let's do it. Let's do it one more time before you file the lawsuit, okay?
I'm happy to do that. First of all, complaints have already been filed with the Attorney General. Legislators are going to ask the Attorney General for an opinion. There is no specific case law that is exactly 110% on point.
Have you looked at the Alabama case law?
There needs to be.
Have you looked at the Alabama case law?
I'm talking about the state of Oklahoma. There needs to be Oklahoma case law that is exactly on point, that is what is happening. Kenny's not in these meetings. Kenny's not in these meetings. Kenny is telling us that we can meet in groups of four and not arrive at consensus. He doesn't know that.
All I'm asking, all I'm asking is that you sit down with Kenny and I, and let's look at the case law before you file some lawsuit and waste the taxpayer money on legal fees. That's all I'm asking, kindly, respectfully.
The reason that taxpayers are going to get hit, I think, is that the city council's going to lose. Yeah.
They're not going to lose. It's just going to be just like the bus case. We are not going to lose.
Okay. Well, I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be determined. And that's, and the implications are so widespread, that probably it's good to take a timeout, and it's a good investment to get the case law, and then if the legislature needs to listen to public opinion and tweak it in a certain way, then that can happen.
You're talking about a policy matter. As the councilman Stonecifer says, if you want to change the policy of the law, they need to change the law. It is not a violation of the rule of the law, as your council said on Channel 4 News, for them to meet in these small groups. He said, you're alleging it's a violation of the spirit of the law, but you can't be held liable for violating the spirit of the law. It's not a violation of what the law says now.
Is it, do you think that that is entirely in line with the Attorney General opinions that have been given so far?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Many, 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 would you allow that many, many people disagree with that interpretation?
Yes, and you disagreed with my smoking interpretation, too, and I was right on that. I mean, this is correct. These are legal meetings. We're not violating the law.
Okay, so just to be clear, just to be clear, it's okay to meet in groups of three or four, and we can have one individual in both meetings?
They're not serial meetings.
No, no, no.
There is no deliberation, and there is no consensus.
Wait, okay, I'm just trying to be clear. So the city manager and/or Kathy O'Connor, Brent Bryant, can meet in groups of three or four, and they can tell the second group what the concerns and issues were in the first meeting. That's okay.
No, they do not. I have not experienced that.
No, no, no. If that happened. Hypothetically.
These are meetings, they're educational, they're a beginning point for research, so you can learn about the issue. You've got to start somewhere.
On May 15th, the Boathouse Foundation thing was a research thing? That's what you're telling me? That them telling us that they're going to put 1.3 million from the general fund was a starting point, an education? That's what that meeting, that's what happened on May 15th?
It's a beginning point for education.
Really? Well, we were right in the middle of budget presentations. Why didn't we just put it, why didn't we just have it out? We had every opportunity, the week before, that day, or the next week.
You just want a different form of government. And I'm asking kindly, I'm asking kindly for you to sit down with us, look at the case law, and before you go off and file a lawsuit, and we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal. I just respectfully ask.
I absolutely will agree to that. Yeah.
Thank you, David. I need your help on something, sir, if I could. I was made aware just a couple of days ago that there's a big event coming up on Saturday, August the 18th, is it?
Okay.
And you were speaking at a breakfast that's being put on by the...
Yes, by the Neighborhood Alliance? Yes, uh-huh, yeah. Looks like it's on my schedule for 9:00 AM.
I learned about this. I promoted it last night at a meeting I was at. I'd encourage all the neighbors who want to get involved and learn what's going on in your city to come to OSU at 9:00 on August the 18th for a complimentary breakfast, followed by remarks by our new mayor about his perspective on Oklahoma City. It's a great way to come together with your fellow leaders, to bond with them, to teamwork with them, to learn more about what's going on. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. David?
I've got a question for, I guess, Jim, or perhaps anybody else here. But I was wondering, could the city, in conjunction with the Oklahoma City Public School system, look at, say, a school that may be considered for abandonment, but go in together to refurbish that and make it into affordable housing for, I mean, and specify who could be there, like teachers, and since the city's involved, maybe expand that to first responders, to provide affordable housing for those individuals? You know, I think we're, I don't know how many thousands, but we have so many thousands of special certificate people having to teach in classrooms because we're losing teachers, despite the legislature's effort last spring to increase salaries. We still have a shortage, and Oklahoma City is one of the main areas of shortages. So if we could provide, assist in providing affordable housing, that might be something that could provide an advantage to the Oklahoma City Public School system. And I was thinking of one school, for example, just like they did at Page Woodson School, but that's a private development. I'm talking in terms of the public school and us possibly owning it, and I guess we would receive the income, kind of a return on our investment, but make it affordable housing for specific professions, I guess is the term. Teachers, and they wouldn't have to necessarily be teachers of the Oklahoma City Public Schools, but if they are located within the Oklahoma City Public School, hopefully that would be attractive. And then also, our first responders. The advantage of doing that is you're putting teachers back in the community that hopefully they're teaching in. Same with first responders. So there's some benefit from that, in addition to providing affordable housing, making working in Oklahoma City more attractive. And I'm not sure which, how we get the funding to provide the cost for that renovation of those schools, whether it's through the Larry's Economic Development Group Trust or some other, maybe even MAPS, you could have maybe a special MAPS program dedicated to provide affordable housing. Anyway, just thought we'd begin looking at that to see if that's even viable.
Just a couple of comments on that, if you will. We have done some redevelopment of old schools. We've done, obviously, you mentioned Page Woodson, through the private development. As Councilman Cooper knows, we're right now working with the school district on both Creston Hills and the old Marcus Garvey site, to see if there's something that can be done there. But you're asking for something beyond that. You're asking for it to be set aside with some type of assisted housing for teachers to be put into there. So the development's one thing, the use and funds to do that would be a different challenge for us to come up.
Yeah, whether or not we could restrict the residents to certain classes such as schoolteachers.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
I don't know if you really can restrict, but we would be happy to look into that. It's an interesting concept, and we'd be happy to look into it and see.
Yeah. I mean, again, I think the city of Oklahoma City needs some advantage in regards to recruiting schoolteachers. And this just might provide them an advantage that could be helpful.
Yeah. City doesn't have any authority whatsoever to get involved in the actual operational issues of the school. I mean, sure, you can meet with them and discuss it, but we don't have any actual say over it. We don't really even have an advisory role. They can listen to it.
I'd be happy to bring that up, maybe at the next school comeback meeting.
Yeah, I'm talking in terms more of like a partnership. We'd provide the financing, because some of these schools are really in pretty dire straits, despite, you know, MAPS for Kids. And there'd be a lot of work required to convert them from classrooms into apartments.
Right. State law provides us with the authority to provide them city money for school functions. So, yes, we can provide money.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Salya?
I think I'm going to follow the advice of my mother, which is, if you have nothing nice to say, don't say anything at all.
All right, Councilman Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to have all of the council and also the citizens to know that in August, we'll be celebrating 60 years, or the 60th anniversary of the City End Movement that's actually started in Oklahoma City, and at Katz Drugstore. What is interesting about that is, is that Oklahoma City has not claimed its rightful place as the start of the City End Movement. Greensboro, North Carolina, and the students from North Carolina A&amp;T have gone around the world saying that they started the City End Movement when records reflect that Ms. Clara Lupa actually went to the Midwinter Board Meeting of the NAACP and told them what we were doing in Oklahoma City. Students at Greensboro went back to Greensboro and North Carolina A&amp;T and started the City End Movement there. They became popular, have gone around the world, and we have not really properly acknowledged, really, that the City End Movement started here at Katz Drugstore. So we'll be celebrating, actually, several days of celebration from the 16th to the 19th. The 19th is on that Sunday, which is actually, celebration will be closing out. It'll start on Thursday, opening up at the Oklahoma History Center, and then it will close at Fifth Street Baptist Church on that Sunday evening on August the 19th. And so, the city council, you're certainly welcome to participate. And I know all of the final plans are being enacted and put in place. So, I just want us to be aware of it, and then the citizens of Oklahoma City as well to celebrate the 60th anniversary of the City End Movement.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, great opportunity to commemorate something really important to our city and to the country, as you said, and I'll be there on the 19th, for sure. Councilman Stonecifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a brief, well, it's not brief, Channel 20 Public Service Announcement. There's been some roadwork on Western out by 172nd that's going on. It's ODOT doing roadwork and infrastructure work. And it recently came to my attention that this roadwork is about to get to Washington Irving Elementary School. Problem being that the school opens back up August 16th, and the roadwork will be conducted. I talked to Councilman Cooper, and we got staff together to go talk with the Director of Operations for the Edmund Public Schools, and Kim Franklin, the principal, and the Director of Transportation. And so, I want Eric Winger just to give a brief discussion as to what we're trying to do with 900 students and their parents, dropping their kids off and picking their kids up after school while all this construction is going on. And I know it's the first time that roadwork has caused congestion in Oklahoma City, and that's why I really wanted to bring it up today.
I've gotten a few emails on this. Eric Winger, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor Councilman. So, we do have a lot of road construction across Oklahoma City, and we do impact certain times of year. And obviously, school startup is one of those more challenging times, since we've not had that impact all summer. But as Councilman Stonecifer mentioned, we've had a couple of meetings with Edmund Public Schools, and specifically with a lot of the school staff, getting them ready for the start of the year. Just as a quick update to the project, the project's well underway. Just as a quick update to the project, the project's well underway. It is a widening project that includes some drainage enhancements. It's also the reconstruction of the intersection at Northwest 178th and Western. The intersection's about three quarters complete, and we're hoping to have all that intersection work done by the end of August. It won't probably be done right before the start of school, but very soon thereafter. The roadwork is proceeding, the drainage has been completed, the resurfacing and the widening is going north from 178th to the city limits. When they get to the north end, they will then flip and they'll do the other end, completing all four lanes by spring of 2019. So the end of this project is in sight. As a part of the school, obviously, some of the safety features that have been added, there is a school crossing right in front of that school for a lot of the area residents. They've put in a flashing light system across the construction work zone, just to promote and encourage safety. So that will be in place. The school is actually doing a lot of operational items with how they're going to load and unload buses, some of the messaging that they're gonna be sending out to the parents and those that drop off or perhaps pick up students in the area. We're also working closely with Oklahoma City Police, just to ensure that we've got safe traffic also in the area. So for additional school announcements, we're being told by the school that they'll be sending out some messages to their, their students and parents in their newsletter, and we're working very closely with them on that messaging. But the road will remain open to two lanes throughout construction. It is not closing, so it'll be at least one northbound and one southbound during the completion of this project. It is a partnership project between the city and ODOT. Just one of those ways we're able to leverage some of the city's monies, is we do a lot of major road enhancements by using grant dollars when they're available. Can I answer any questions that anybody may have?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes items from council. There appear to be no city manager reports today. Claims in prayer roll, if you want to go to OKC.gov and look at the council agenda, you can pull that up. And we have one person who signed up under Citizens to be heard, Michael Washington. So please limit your remarks to three minutes or less. And if you wouldn't mind stating again your name and address.
Yeah. Michael C. Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73111. Again, I want to thank Mr. Cooper for informing this illustrious committee today that there will be a ceremonial presentation on three days with respect to the late, great Clara Lupa and her civil rights movement here in Oklahoma. I just want to encourage you, again, to visit, as the gentleman just spoke about, and also to inform the committee here, I missed it, that I'm told that y'all approved for this to become zoned as a historical preservation site, which is a great thing. But I also want y'all to know, too, that you're looking at the man who started the process off. The Freedom Center was actually closed in 2010, mind you, and the close doors actually for good, till Michael Washington suddenly stepped up eight years later and said, why is this, actually, seven years. In November of last year, I talked to Ms. Katie Frittl, who started the process off for me in the Historical Preservation Commission, stating that we needed to rezone this very illustrious building, as well as its site and area, to be rezoned as a, the Freedom Center be rezoned as a historical preservation site because of the great thing that Clara Lupa did in the civil rights struggle, in doing the civil rights era. And as the brother just spoke about, Greenbrow students, they came two years after the actual longest City End Movement here in Oklahoma City. It started by Clara Lupa, and 13 youth who went down to the no longer standing Katz Drugstore after a visit from New York, which they were invited in a play called Brother President, which Clara Lupa took the youth to, and her daughter, Marilyn, stated, mama, we're going back to racist Oklahoma. We need to do something about those changes down there, too. Up here in the north, these people around here pretty much accepted as African-American. They can eat with everybody, they can go to the same schools, restaurants and things, and parks. Why don't we go down and buy a hamburger and a Coke? And again, for 10 years, it's been closed down. But you know what Michael Washington said? We're gonna look at this lady for more than a quarter. We're going to the actual foundation of where those youth were actually given their education and training from. And we're actually taking steps now to reopen the Freedom Center, so that the youth who didn't, did not have access to that Freedom Center can go in and learn about their culture, their language, their tradition and heritage. And again, Michael Washington started all off in November. That should not have been taking me a lowly nobody, as obviously I am, to have to come up. And whereas our city officials, black owned, I'm talking about, where are our black business owners? Where are our black historians? Again, if this was so significant, we don't just want a commemoration of a three-day event. It should not have taken me almost as a long character to say, okay, we need to preserve this spot. Clearly, without question, again, as he stated, we did have not stated our claim to fame yet. But again, not only am I taking steps to get this preserved as historical preservation, but I want it to go internationally. I want people, when they come to Oklahoma and say, well, look here, this is the Freedom Center, let's go and see what Clara Lupa and the 13 youth did with this Freedom Center, and what she did for her community and others as well. She's got renowned respect from the governor's office, she's got renowned respect from the mayor's office, she's got government, renowned respect from business people and associations and what have you. So again, I just want everybody to know, in closing, that I appreciate y'all for whatever steps you took. I missed it, however, I'm here today, and I just thank y'all very much for making this opportunity available, and hopefully that we will learn something from the events from 16th to the 19th of next month. Thank y'all very much. And Mr. Shadid, in closing, I might take that lawsuit up for you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? You had the look that, like, maybe you wanted to. I wanted to give you that opportunity. Would you state your name and address?
My name is Teresa Lee, and my address is 2020 North Shoretown. The reason why I come, I come to listen to all of y'all, there was chaos back there. But I come to say, I appreciate you guys, you know, let me come in and listen and have an opportunity. I'm not really an Obama fan, either, so that's how I feel. So that's it. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Teresa.